Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to Perth County Council. This is day of June. I'd like to call our meeting in order. One can be square ahead for a moment of reflection. Thank you. We need our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Ananashabey, who have a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the indigenous and Matia and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have responsibility for reconciliation and the continued stewardship of the land on which we live and work. I need a motion to accept the June 6, 2024 agenda be approved. And we'll do that.
Yeah, disclosure.
Moved by Councillor Heskey, second by Councillor Orr, all in favor. Carried. If anyone has pecuniary interest, you can declare that now or as the meeting goes along. I guess I flipped them, so anyway, we did it. We have fifty-nine items out on our consent agenda. Is there any item anyone would like told or have questions on? Councillor Orr.
Six point four, Perth County Official Plan Funding Request.
Hey, Councillor Kastenberg.
Councillor Orr beat me to the punchline.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? If not, we have a motion that council receives consent agenda items six point one point one to six point five nine, with the exception of six point four, and approves the May 2, 2024 and May 16, 2024 council minutes. Moved by Deputy Warden Helen, second by Councillor McKenzie, all in favor. Get our reach. Six point four, Sue.
It's pretty self-explanatory in there, but the Municipal Day Association is in a deficit amount of about eighteen hundred dollars, so they're looking to ask all of the lower tiers, Strathard and St. Mary's and Perth County, to help them get out of that. This occurred due to costs arising through technical support for the last two years, and we also had some difficulties with people saying they were coming and then no shows and no pay. So we're correcting those. It's going to be in Perth East this year in November, and we have already confirmed Tom Lady speaking on mental health, so we look forward to it. But if everybody could pitch in a little bit, this is a one-time ask. I would like Perth County to support it.
Okay, maybe we can ask Cory where the money would come from if we do that?
Yeah, through you, Warren. I would recommend that this be funded from the county general reserve. The general reserve has about a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in that reserve.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Heskey.
Just one quick one. So you mentioned that there were people said they were coming, but didn't show up and then didn't pay. So is that through their municipal council or was that?
I think there were some from police services. I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but there were people that said they were coming, and then the day came and they were otherwise occupied. So I think Tyler can speak to it. We have a different system that if you sign up, you pay right then and there.
I was just going to say, like, let's be honest, they should have paid. Correct. That's their real, you know, not our fault they didn't show up.
So through the Warren, just to kind of dovetail that comment, what we're looking at for this year moving forward is that payment is received through Eventbrite platform upfront instead of trying to collect on the back end, so the problem should be rectified moving forward.
Any other questions? Councillor Smith?
Yeah, just for information, Perth East passed Tuesday night their council meeting that they support it, and I'd be willing to support this as well. So if you need a move or I can move it.
Okay, Councillor Smith moves. Secondaire Councillor Heskey. Any more questions? All those in favor? Carried. Okay, we are now going to move to public meetings, hearings, and delegations, and we do have a public meeting. So we have to, that regular council recess for the purpose of holding planning public meeting at approximately nine oh six a.m. Move in a second for that. Moved by Councillor Orr, second by Councillor Duncan. No, Councillor McDermott. All those in favor? It's not going to be a good morning, is it? Okay, so we are in our planning meeting. So the planning public meeting, June 6, 2024, agenda be approved. Moved by Councillor McKenzie, second by Councillor McDermott, all in favor. Carried. We have the minutes from our last public meeting. Is there any questions on any of those minutes? No? Okay, then we have a motion that council approves the minutes for the April 18, 2024 planning public meeting. Moved by Councillor Duncan, second by Councillor Kastenberg. All those in favor? Carried.
Just do a disclosure on this one, too. Disclosure, pecuniary.
Okay, if you have disclosure, pecuniary interest, you can do that now or as we get into the meeting. So we have, the first one that we're going to deal with is County of Perth Official Plan Amendment Number 221. It's for the municipality of North Perth, and we have Nathan with us this morning. Nathan, are you ready to present? Welcome to Perth County Council, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, our Warden Nuggets and members of County Council. I am here to present on Official Plan Amendment Number OP 220 for Macon Developments, the agents are MHBC Planning. The location is Part Lot 23, Concession 2, Wallace Ward, Municipality of North Perth.
Two two one.
The planning public meeting is different than the regular council.
Wrong one, sorry. I'm here to present that on application 221, Municipality of North Perth, the agents are MHBC Planning Limited. Location is very similar, but it's Part Lot 24, Concession 2, Wallace Ward, Municipality of North Perth. And I do have a short presentation for County Council. Next slide, please. Just an outline of the subject property is shown on the mapping. So the outline of the subject property for North Perth, it is shown in blue on the mapping, so it's directly adjacent to Highway 23 and Line 87. This is at the north end of Listowel for folks' reference. So you'll see some industrial and commercial development built up across the road, across Highway 23. Currently, the lands request are for an official plan amendment to include this area within the settlement boundary area. It currently has an urban fringe designation, and the request is for a commercial and industrial development. Next slide, please. Just an outline of the two applications, because there are two identical, very similar applications directly adjacent to each other, so we're just giving this for County Council reference. They'll see very, very similarities. So this is OP 221. The request is for a settlement area, so that's what we're being requested today from County Council. And then just for council's reference as well, too, there is a zoning amendment that's been requested as well, too, that goes to North Perth Council. That's for a C3 designation and M1 and M1 Special and a Parks and Recreation, which would include the stormwater management pond. Next slide, please. So there's an outline of the subject proposal for County Council's reference. As mentioned, this is for an OP. Some of this will be addressed through the zoning stage. There is discussions with MTO and some other parties with respect to the subject property. What we're looking at is a few new roads going in, as well as that PR designation. That would be for the future stormwater management plan to service the subject area. Next slide, please. Supporting studies submitted in support of the application. So the applicants have submitted an environmental impact study, archaeological study, planning justification report, which included the minimum distance separation. Just for council's reference, there is no minimum distance impacts on this property, so that does not bear reference on this one, but they have included that as part of the whole area and valuation. Functional servicing stormwater report for the subject lands in North Perth, this is the GM Blue Plan submission. So GM Blue Plan, a master servicing plan as well for the subject area, and they have supported this with a functional servicing stormwater report. As well as the county has completed municipal comprehensive review, this was the report completed by Watson Associates, which looked at the entire land. In the draft official plan being presented, this land are designated for inclusion within the settlement area, so the applicants have just initiated their individual official plan amendment. And then as well as they've committed a traffic impact study, that's currently under discussion with MTO. That would look at some of the lands being connected to Highway 23 right now. There are some intersections improvements to 23 and Highway 87s being considered. So that's a bit of a delay there, but at the same time, doesn't really impact the official plan at this stage, but it would be addressed through the subdivision and zoning application. As well as the applicants have completed a noise study, because there are two applications directly adjacent, one is residential, one is commercial industrial, they're required to look at noise impacts. So the applicants are proposing a berm to run down the center of the property just to create some separation, some separation between the two properties. Next slide, please. There's an overall concept of the plan as it would see fit. It's a decently large development. We will see the commercial industrial lands to the west and then the residential land component to the east. Next slide, please. Pounds on the North Perth file, MTO had no concerns with inclusion of the parcel within the settlement boundary areas, they weren't concerned with that. They are looking at evaluating the traffic impact study that relates to that road form. I think they've had some positive discussions, but that's being worked out through the zoning and the subdivision stage. MVCA is also providing some comments as back to the soil conditions on site and have asked that those be included in the draft conditions when it comes back to the plan of subdivision, but no concerns with the inclusion of the lands within the settlement boundary area. Next slide, please. Just a picture right now, currently it's being cropped. There is some fill happy on the southern end of the property, just for some storage and reuse, but currently, yeah, it's a fairly decently flat agricultural area, no real hills or mounds or anything like that. There is a small pond feature in the middle of the property that's being asked to be relocated. The environmental impact study did look at that pond, and they're asking to replace some habitat location within the future stormwater management area for some snakes, and I believe there was a potential for snapping turtles as well, too. So a couple different habitat replacement or habitat relocation within the stormwater management pond area. Excellent, please. Planning comments. So the area was completed through a northeast Listowel master servicing plan, so this was done through an EA process to look at the sewage capacity as well as the stormwater management for the site. They will be required at some point in time to install a sewage pumping station, so North Perth and Listowel will have to put a sewage pumping station in. That relates to some of the phasing of the subject lands. The draft Perth County Official Plan has identified the property to be included within the settlement boundary area for Listowel, so it is part of the accommodating for that deficit of land available for commercial and industrial development. Supporting studies have been provided in support of the applications. They came out positive. There was a number of comments that seemed it was fairly functional, including the Watson Report. Servicing is available from the town of Listowel and through North Perth, so that's available for hookup and connection. MDS, this just references the adjacent property, but there are always no MDS impacts on the North Perth properties, so those don't infringe or impact that at all. And then there is some lands to the east, the stockyard locations, so that was looked throughout through the MDS. MDS does not cover the stockyard locations, so that would be addressed, as well as there is a helipad next to the, on the stockyards as well, too. And there are ongoing discussions with that, but did not impact the official plan amendment for requests to include it within the settlement boundary area. And then density has encouraged and limited in some areas due to compatibility, just with that noise impact being located adjacent to the berm and the commercial industrial, there will be some lower density houses right next there. They can't do a height issues and things like that, because it would be impacted through noise. And next slide, please. Actually, we can skip to this one, apologies. So it is my recommendation that council receives the County Official Plan Amendment Number 221, Municipality of North Perth Report, and that council approves the Official Plan Amendment Number 221 to the County of Perth Official Plan, submitted by MHBC Planning Limited on behalf of the Municipality of North Perth, affecting lands described as Lot 24, which is a Part Lot 24, Concession 2, eight three one one, eight three three one, Road 164, Listowel Ward, Municipality of North Perth. Happy to address or answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? Seeing no one, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application, other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? Seeing no one, does the applicant or the applicant's agent wish to address or speak with respect to the application? Morning.
Good morning. Warden, Mr. Council, Pierre Chauvin with MHBC Planning, here on behalf of the municipality. I just have a slide deck, brief slide deck here. This slide deck will be somewhat of a repetition of my next presentation on adjacent subdivision, but you'll see some of the similarities, because they are tied together, not only from proximity and road connections, but servicing as well. Nathan did an excellent job of summarizing it, but I'll just quickly try to go through these various slides. As you can see in this, the red area is the land, the subject lands that are owned by the municipality, insulated for future development, industrial, commercial uses. Next slide, please. So as Nathan indicated, these lands were identified as urban fringe. They're not in a special policy area in your current official plan. So we're here to re-designate these lands to highway commercial and industrial, to provide more economic base for the local municipality. So with it, along with this application, we filed a zone change and a plan of subdivision, and those were all filed late last year, this morning, to deal with just the official plan. Next slide. So as Nathan indicated, the total acreage is about fifty-four acres. You can see it's Wallace Main Road and Listowel runs kind of up and down, north-south, bisects sort of the existing highway commercial industrial uses, all say on the west side of Wallace. This will be an expansion of that sort of employment area on the east side of Wallace, basically an extension of the Listowel area towards Palmerston. Adjacent to us is lands owned by, and I'll be speaking to those lands later, they're planned for residential, and they're owned by a company, by a local development company by the name of Make'em. And again, the mountain north, the boundary of the settlement area would be Line 87, which is sort of that east-west road at the very top of the image. As I indicated, these lands have been identified as urban fringe and future development for many years, and we're simply here to re-designate and recognize, in fact, what your own comprehensive review identified in terms of the need for employment lands, and these lands in particular being targeted for that type of use. As Nathan indicated, they're currently in agriculture and with road stubs already available to the lands, but excellent frontage already on Wallace Avenue and Line 87. There's this, there is that isolated pond that Nathan spoke to that we will be relocating and rehabilitating as part of the stormwater management pond. Next slide, please. So this is just, again, a different image of what Nathan had in terms of the comprehensive review of how it all fits together. I should note that you'll see how there is the one east-west road by cutting through the industrial and the residential. That road will be realigned and straightened in response to the MTO's comments with respect to how close that intersection is to their future roundabout, that they intend to put at Line 87 in Wallace, so that'll be addressed through the draft plan of subdivision process. And with that, we've also, we are going to be relocating or rearranging that stormwater management pond. It will still act as a buffer, that pond, with respect to the, there are existing residential uses on the north side of Line 87, and that pond will still act as a buffer between the industrial, commercial uses and those existing residential uses. So that's a good, a good thing. And you can see there is an extension of it to existing roads to the south, so there will be connections to those existing roads to the south, as well as a couple connections to Wallace Avenue, and then just one connection to the residential to the east, just to help discourage sort of that pass-through traffic into the residential. The residential side will have its own access to Line 87 as well as to the south as well. Next slide. And so again, this is just a description of the various road connections and the, speaking to the pond feature being relocated. And we are also planning to integrate municipal trails between the two plans. Nathan spoke to a berm between the residential and the industrial. We hope to try to integrate the trail with that berm design. There's still some more discussion on how that will be designed, but the intention is to provide some buffer between the residential and industrial, but also noise mitigation. There are requirements to do further studies on the industrial lands when those future developments come forward. Whoever purchases those lands will need to be doing their own additional noise study and mitigation whenever the site plan may come forward for those individual properties. Next slide. So again, this is just summarizing what we're, we're designating this, that's currently within the urban fringe and special policy area. I've been involved in this project for a number of years since the Northeast Master Plan Growth Era started and the servicing strategy, EA, that was undertaken back in 2020. Through that study, it contemplated servicing this area through a number of sewer extensions and pumping stations, which will be largely funded through locally specific development charge funds, so will be largely funded through the development on itself. Again, as I mentioned, your growth forecast as part of your comprehensive review identified the need for more employment lands, and this is satisfying that need with re-designing to core or commercial unemployment. Next slide. And I won't go too much in detail here, but other than to say that with some of the industrial uses as part of the zoning, we'll be looking at restricting the range of uses, particularly on those industrial lands interfacing with the residential, to terms of where loading facilities should be located, outdoor storage. Again, these are all noise mitigation measures that the noise study that we have undertaken recommended as part of this development. Next slide. So these are all the studies that Nathan spoke to. I won't get into detail here, so next slide. And the noise study, as I said, which extensively provided mitigation measures. We have completed an EIS with respect to relocation of that pond, and they are supporting that relocation and restoration of that isolated feature in the stormwater management pond, so it'll be recreating sort of that wetland feature. Next slide. So those are my comments, and we have reviewed your staff report and its recommendation, and we support the recommendation and that study the same. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, are there any questions from members of council? If not, thank you, gentlemen. We will move to our next public meeting, and it's for County, Perth County Official Plan Amendment Number 224, 2467858, Ontario Inc., and I believe we have John with us this morning to present that. Welcome, John.
Thank you very much, Warden and members of County Council. Before you, is Official Plan Amendment Number 225, 225.
Sorry, you're right, I'm wrong. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Location is 1020 Walton Avenue North, the red star, as you see on the slide here. I do want to mention a few things that were added kind of last minute to the council's package. There was an addendum created by MHBC to address draft official plan amendment, or the draft OP that the county has completed. There's also comments from North Perth Traffic Consultant Julio Salvini, as well as, I believe, even further last minute, there was a letter of positive recommendation from, I believe it was a member of the community, a resident. So those are the three items that I just want to mention before I get too far into it, so next slide. All right, so the official plan amendment here proposes to keep subject lands within the urban fringe designation and to add a site-specific provision. This site-specific provision would essentially allow for the development of nineteen clustered dwelling, townhouse cluster dwelling units. Perth County Council is the approval authority for the official plan amendment. Subject application at this time is only proposing to facilitate the form of development, the density, and the number of units. A site plan amendment and draft plan of condo, as well as a zoning by law amendment, will be expected after the OPA, depending on the OPA's outcome. Through this process, such matters like building locations, lighting, parking, access aisles, privacy screening, and garbage collection will all be addressed to minimize impacts on the surrounding land uses. Next slide, please. All right, so the Walton Avenue neighborhood was traditionally established through the development of large residential lots geared towards low-density development on private services, and this would include septic as well. The large size of these lots was directly related to the need to accommodate large septic systems with large weeping beds. As you see on the image on the left, you can see the large nature of the lots, specifically on the west side of Walton Avenue North there. So the Walton Avenue neighborhood is now municipally serviced for the entire street. This now provides parcels in the area with the opportunity to intensify, to create a more efficient use of these historically large parcels. Correspondence with the municipal consultant engineer, B. M. Ross, has indicated that there would be no servicing capacity issues with nineteen cluster dwelling units at this site. Next slide, please. So the provincial policy statement directs development to areas that are municipally serviced. This proposal is considered a form of infill housing and intensification. It provides with the area with a mixture of housing types. It also provides for an efficient use of the property designated for residential development. This is to accommodate the expected growth anticipated from the comprehensive review created by the Perth County Draft OP. And again, this can be municipally serviced, so the proposal, based on planning staff's opinion, is considered consistent with the PPS. Next slide, please. So the subject lands, as previously mentioned, were, are designated urban fringe in the Perth County Official Plan. This designation establishes the use for the lands to be low-density residential, and this, low-density residential, which is permitted, sorry. So the planning question is now, should or can the proponents build nineteen cluster dwelling units rather than the already permitted low-density single attached dwellings? So for you, the density guidelines that are in the Listowel Ward Official Plan are on the left, and then the density guidelines for a different area of Listowel, essentially east of Listowel, are on the right. This specific site doesn't have density guidelines in the Perth County Official Plan, so we've reached to other opportunities nearby that do have density guidelines. As you see, the proposal, the proposed density at thirty-one point seven units per hectare meets the density guidelines, not only in the Listowel Ward Official Plan, but in areas east of Listowel as well. The proposal also doesn't sterilize prime agriculture of land and is not considered urban sprawl. It provides an underutilized site the opportunity to appropriately intensify, to create a more complete community. And the intent of the Perth County Official Plan restricting development here to low-density is to wait for adequate servicing. Now that adequate servicing is here, the intent of that Perth County Official Plan is achieved. Next slide, please. So I also wanted to get into the draft official plan a little bit, and the draft official plan designates this area as neighborhood. This draft designation permits amongst other residential units, townhouse dwelling units. The Perth County Comprehensive Review, completed by Watson and Associates for the draft OP, outlines that Perth County is expecting a population forecast increase from forty-two thousand four hundred to sixty-two thousand nine hundred. This is an increase of over twenty thousand residents by 2051. This is about a forty-eight percent increase. Perth County also has a potential deficit of approximately four thousand fifty housing units by that same year. Listowel specifically needs through two hundred and thirty-eight hectares of urban residential land to accommodate this anticipated residential development over the next twenty-five years. That's equivalent to approximately six hundred acre farms, just to give some context there. So then, the draft OP also provides that a steady increase in the share of medium and high-density housing forms is required to respond to the housing needs of an aging demographic and the upward pressure on local housing prices and declining affordability in Perth County. By providing a medium-density development, the app- By providing a medium-density development, the applicants are proposing a development at a density that helps meet targets in the comprehensive review without compromising the low-density nature of the neighborhood. Proposal is not considered high-density and provides for a greater range and mix of housing types in the Walton Avenue neighborhood. Excellent. So the applicants also submitted a zoning by law amendment. We're here to assess the official plan amendments, so I won't get into too much detail there. But essentially, one item that they would need site-specific help from would be the rear yard setback, and that's a technical setback in nature. But again, that's a North Perth assessment at this time. Next slide, please. So public notice was provided to neighboring property owners on May 17th in accordance with the Planning Act. We did receive multiple comments and letters from members of the public that those were included in your council package. When we brought the official plan amendments to North Perth Council, they voted against the official plan amendments, against recommending it for approval to County Council, and they also voted against approving the zoning by law amendment in principle. So that's something to note as well. Next slide, please. So North Perth Council and members of the public provided some comments for consideration. One of the comments specifically was sightline potential issues on the Walton Avenue road. Since I was able to speak with BM Ross, the engineer for North Perth, and they've provided a sightline analysis of this property with the help of Salvini Consulting, the sightline analysis came back and said that everything was fine regarding the sightlines. So I just wanted to address that, as that was some further action that we took in response to some of the public concerns and council concerns. So this image, the property was too wide to capture it entirely, so this, both of these images are looking west, are looking east, sorry, on Walton Avenue of the existing conditions of the subject property. As you can see, there's a couple of sheds and an existing single detached dwelling. Next slide, please. This is a storm arm management facility located directly to the north of the subject property. It's just good to note for context. Next slide, please. And then, we have a recommendation that County Council does approve the official plan amendment as we believe that it creates a proper density development, and I can take any questions as well at this time. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, John. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? Okay, if you would come up to the table, please, and give us your name. An address.
Hello, I'm Jason Herbert. I live at 1012 Walton Avenue North. And the property just south of this proposal, right next door. It doesn't show on the maps. I'm not sure why the plans were drawn up without my house on there, but I am there. Been there for almost two years now. So just a bit of a backstory, we've been living in Listowel for almost 25 years. We lived on Boyd Avenue, which is a kind of a medium-density area, you know, with neighbors all around us. And we wanted something a little more spacious, a little more private, a quieter area. And so when this lot came available, you know, we almost stretched ourselves to get it to, you know, and then I spent, you know, nights, weekends, I built the house all by myself and, you know, with some help from family and friends, and spent a lot of time to, you know, create this beautiful place that gives us that peacefulness. And so you can kind of imagine what my horror when I find out that I could potentially have eight neighbors directly connecting and sharing my property line. And I don't think, I can't even think of another place in town or that has that kind of a, you know, where you've got to share your property line with eight other neighbors. So for that reason, you know, I'm totally against this. If a townhouse were built along the street where I could just have one neighbor, that would be a different story. But this is just the wrong place for, you know, for a unit like that. When there's a new development going to the north, it's going to have all kinds of townhouse properties and, you know, those people, that future buyers of those properties will, they'll know going in that, you know, this is what they're, you know, going to move into. Whereas when I purchased my lot, it was, everything in the area was zoned rural residential with the exception of the new development just a little bit north that is, was zoned as future development. And, you know, the property right beside me, rural residential with an old farmhouse on it, same on both sides. And so this is what I was purchasing. I paid a premium for that, actually. Like, you know, you pay a premium to have that kind of privacy and openness to your area. And now they're proposing a wall of the two-story townhouses right down the side of me. It's going to block off about 75% of my view of the backfield and bush. You know, we see deer back there, all kinds of wildlife in this new pond, the geese flying in the pond that they dug back there. It's just going to block all that off. And, you know, part of the reason we wanted to get a more quiet area is just, you know, there's people cutting their lawns all the time, you know, you have that noise, and I realize, you know, I have to cut my lawn too. But now I'm going to have, you know, 19 different lawnmowers to listen to throughout the week in an area where I was trying to get away from some of that. So I don't think it's fair. And I think it's, you know, it's, to me, it's unethical to do something on your property which would reduce the value of your neighbor's property. And this definitely will. Like, you take a private rural residential property and give them nine neighbors or 19 neighbors or eight direct neighbors, that's got to reduce the value because it makes it less attractive. Like, it's less attractive to me and anyone else I've ever talked to about this agrees with me on that it's just, it's not a great spot, you know. Put this in an area where people know what they're getting into when they go into it. And that's my thought. And then there's the issue of the fire department, you know, access to get in, and there's only one single driveway into the place. And, you know, they don't, it's not just the trucks, they've got their equipment they've got to unload and, you know, so there's issues there with that. And then the other thing that concerns me is parking. I think only, this proposal's only allowed for three visitor parking spaces, and which isn't enough in my books because you have 19 homes, they're saying possibly two parking spaces per house, but included in that is a garage. And two of my kids have lived in these similar type of housing, and the garages, you would never get the average vehicle in there and be able to open the door. So I don't know how they count as a parking space. So that means they're going to be parking, visitors are going to be parking up and down Walton Avenue, which will make more traffic and congestion and, you know, it's, they're big lots, I know, and, but why can't we just preserve that? It's probably the lowest density area in the entire town, and it's a nice quiet area. I think the nice thing to do is to preserve that. That's about all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Herbert. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition? Okay, if you would come up to the table, please, and give us your name and address.
Matthew Reimer. I live at 1066 Walton Avenue North, Listowel. Thank you, Warden and council members. Just a lot of the same concerns that Jason, my neighbor, has shared. But, you know, especially around the parking, I live a little further down the street, but I do have concerns for the parking, not enough spaces for the parking. But along with that, my concern really is, so I realize it's a site-specific request that they want, but they are large lots, there is room for more dwellings than what there currently is, right? There's just one on a large lot. But my concern is if we allow this for the one, then this will potentially happen to all of the homes that come up for sale, to all these large lots, then the neighborhood that, as Jason shared, and I moved to the lot just last year and built my own house there, that, you know, as you said, we did pay a premium for these, and we paid a premium for them in our taxes. And that will all change if we just allow this to be filled up with townhomes. So that's my concern there. I just ask that you take that into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you, members.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reimer. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? If not, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application, other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? Seeing no one, does the applicant or the applicant's agent wish to make a presentation or speak to the application? Good morning, and welcome to Perth County Council. If you could please tell us the name and who you're representing.
Good morning, Warden and members of council. My name is Emily Elliott, and I'm with MHBC on behalf of the applicant, and will be speaking in support of the Official Plan Amendment application. I'd just like to start off by thanking Mr. Bice for his thorough presentation and staff report. We've reviewed and do support the recommendations that the council approved the OPA. I have a brief presentation that I'll share with you. Some of this may be duplication from what Mr. Bice presented, so kind of skip over some of that through the slides. Next slide, please. So the site's located to the north of Listowel. It has an area of about 0.6 hectares and about 42 meters of frontage on Walton Avenue. It currently contains a single detached dwelling and accessory structures. There are municipal services to this site. They were installed along Walton Avenue last summer as set out in the township's Northeast Master Plan in anticipation of future development in this area. Next slide, please. The proposal is for a townhouse development containing 19 units. It represents a missing middle form of housing, which is a town of, or sorry, a form of housing that is encouraged by the township. The townhouses are arranged in three blocks with one block containing four units fronting on Walton Avenue and two blocks oriented on a private condominium road. There's a large central amenity area for future residents, and each unit has rear yard amenity space as well. There is sufficient space along the property lines to allow for landscaping and buffering and fencing as well. Access to the site is provided as a private roadway connected to Walton Avenue. Next slide, please. This is a rendering that illustrates a concept for the townhouses. This will be refined through the site plan approval stage, including material types and colors. But just to give an idea of what the townhouses would look like, parking is provided as a driveway and a garage, and there are also three visitor parking spaces. And like I said, there's only four units that front along Walton. The proposed development can be serviced by existing municipal services, and it's a condominium community, so all maintenance, including snow clearing and landscaping, will be done by the condo corps. And the development will be subject to site plan approval where we'll go through all the detailed design matters. Next slide, please. Just to briefly touch on the Official Plan Amendment application, and this was covered well in Mr. Bice's presentation, the lands are designated urban fringe by the County Official Plan, and we're looking for a site-specific amendment to allow the proposed development. And so that would be a special policy area for the site. The application is also intended to reflect the policy direction in the ongoing municipal comprehensive review, which does propose to designate the lands' neighborhoods, which allows for a variety of residential uses. Next slide, please. The lands are currently zoned rural residential, and the zoning by law amendments seeks an R5 zoning with a site-specific provision to allow for a reduced rear yard setback of four and a half meters. It's really a technical amendment request as that rear yard functions as a side yard for the last unit of the townhouse block. All the units will have rear yards that exceed seven and a half meters. Next slide, please. Just to take a couple of moments to kind of go through the ongoing municipal comprehensive review, and Mr. Bice did touch on a little bit of this as well in his presentation. As part of the Official Plan Review, Watson Associates completed an MCR that was updated last November, and in this document, the countywide population was projected to increase by about 62,000 residents, which translates to about 8,600 new units and 287 new units a year. And North Perth is anticipated to accommodate about 74% of that countywide housing development, meaning that the population of North Perth is anticipated to increase by about 15,000 new residents or 6,000 households to 2051. The urban residential land need identified for North Perth was 243 hectares, and 238 hectares of that was identified for Listowel. And in terms of the form of housing, the MCR forecasted that 31% of housing demand will be for medium-density housing, which includes townhouses. So the proposed development will contribute to significant demand for new homes in Listowel and assist in addressing the identified need for medium-density development. Next slide, please. In terms of the draft official plan that was released last December, the subject lands are located in serviced urban area in recognition that services were installed along Walton and they're designated neighborhoods. The serviced urban area is intended to include a range of densities and a mix of housing types in order to minimize land consumption and servicing costs. The neighborhood's designation permits a variety of housing types, including townhouses. And there are specific criteria set out in the draft official plan related to townhouse and medium-density development, and this proposal does address those criteria. So the proposed development conforms to the policy framework for the emerging County of Perth Official Plan, and it contributes to the for housing in Listowel. Next slide, please. At the public meeting and through the public process of this application, we did hear comments from members of the public and township council, and some of those were echoed today. So I'd just like to take a couple of minutes to address a few of these comments. So in terms of the site design, I can confirm that the application will go through site plan approval. Through this review, detailed design matters will be addressed, and that includes landscaping, fencing, buffering, lighting, waste collection, circulation, accessibility, and servicing and grading. And it will confirm the design of the fire route, which in its current form does address the OBC requirements. And in terms of traffic, as Mr. Bice noted, there was a sightline assessment undertaken, and there are no issues with relation to the sightlines to the property and the driveway. And the proposed parking arrangements do satisfy the minimum requirements of the zoning bylaws. Each unit has two spaces, and there are three visitor spaces provided. Next slide, please. In terms of density, the proposal is 31.7 units per hectare, which is generally consistent with the density guidelines in Listowel, and it reflects the density of similar-scale developments in the community. The concept plan is sufficient to accommodate appropriate setbacks, parking landscaped areas, and it provides greater amount of private and common amenity space than requirements than required by the zoning bylaw. And in terms of compatibility, the townhouses are two stories, and they're oriented along a private road with only four units fronting the street in recognition of the low-density character of the area, and then there are sufficient setbacks to accommodate landscaping and buffering. Next slide, please. So just in closing, the applications are consistent with the provincial policy statement. They conform to the policy framework of the county OP and the draft county OP. The proposed zoning establishes appropriate regulatory standards to permit the development. Development can be adequately serviced by municipal infrastructure, which was installed last year to accommodate development in this area, and it represents a form of housing that reflects an efficient use of land and accommodates the missing middle housing type of which there's a great demand for in Listowel. The townhouses represent an sustainable form of The townhouses represent an sustainable form of housing that's accessible for families. So overall, the proposal, in my view, represents good planning, and we support the staff recommendations to approve the official plan amendment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions this morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from members of council? Counselor Trenkowski?
Thank you, Warden, through you. My question for you, Emily, is you mentioned that a couple times in your presentation, the missing mill for affordable housing. Can you give your council an idea of what the approximate value of one of these units would be if they were to be offered on the market upon completion?
Through the warden, at this point, the price point of the housing hasn't been determined. They would be, are intended to be market rate, but they are a townhouse-built form, which is typically, you know, more affordable than when compared to a single detached dwelling.
supplementary question. So if you're uncertain as to what the value is, then how can this council make a proper evaluation of that situation?
And again, through the warden, the value of the homes isn't a criteria for a Planning Act application. It does, the form of housing does address an identified need for medium-density housing in the community.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Richardson?
I have the same question, Counselor Trenkowski, did I want to cross the cost of the run or units?
Okay, anyone else have questions? Deputy Warden Callum?
Yes, through you, Warden, and thank you, John, Emily, for your presentations. Thank you, Jason and Matthew, for your comments. My concern specifically is for emergency access for fire and service and medical. One access only. Another concern is for the parking with 19 units. It'll be very congested, and again, there's struggle for medical and fire services. You mentioned about three additional parking spaces for visitors. What are the other 16 units going to do?
Through the warden, we have, we satisfy the parking requirements of the zoning bylaw. So there, again, there's the driveway and the garage parking space for each unit, and then the visitor parking spaces as required by the zoning. We could take a look at the parking arrangements, and again, we'll be revisiting the emergency access through the site plan application.
Okay, thank you. And I do agree that we do need a development like this, but unfortunately, this is the wrong location for this development. And for all those reasons, I will not be supporting this application. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from council have questions? If not, thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next public meeting. And our next meeting is for the County of Perth Official Plan Amendment number 226 for the Adams application, and we have Jeff with us this morning to give that, so.
Thank you.
Where's yours?
So the subject land is located on the north side of Line 40, between Road 108 and Perth Road 107, and it's municipally known as 2324 Line 40. Next slide, please. The proposed official plan amendment is to re-designate the lands from agricultural and natural resources environment to a natural resources environment and agricultural designation with a special policy to allow for bed and breakfast, farmification operation within the existing accessory building. There's also a Perth East zoning bylaw amendment that was recently approved in principle, and that amendment is to rezone a portion of the subject lands from an agricultural zone to an agricultural zone special to allow that same bed and breakfast farmification establishment within the accessory building, and also to reduce the minimum distance separation requirement from the livestock barn at 2340 Line 40, from 471 meters to 181 meters, and from the manure storage, from 524 meters to 202 meters. Topkin is proposing to renovate a detached structure to allow for the bed and breakfast establishment. The structure is existing, is located outside of the regulated area. A bed and breakfast operation is permitted within a part of dwellings in the agricultural designation, provided that the operation is clearly secondary to the main use of the dwelling as a private residence, and that sewage disposal and water supply are being addressed. Land use is required to meet the minimum distance separations in order to minimize land use incompatibilities. So the existing accessory structure is considerably smaller than the principal dwelling, and the internal renovations of the structure represents a minor deviation from the zoning bylaw provisions, and it's not anticipated that they will have a negative impact on the surrounding land uses. The bed and breakfast operation can be serviced, oh, sorry, it will remain accessory to the primary residential dwelling use, and it can be serviced from the existing private well in the septic system. Conversion of the structure will not involve any clearing of the existing woodlot, and the structure is located outside of that regulated area. Next slide, please. Bed and breakfast land use is only permitted in the principal dwelling and not within the accessory building, which is why we need the official plan amendment. Principal dwelling is located closer to the livestock barn and the manure storage than the accessory dwelling that is being converted. Existing accessory building is located at a point that is farthest away from the conflicting agricultural operations without impacting the existing woodlot in the natural area. It is further away from the dwelling, or from the agricultural operations than the principal dwelling. As such, the intent of the MDS guidelines are being met. Next slide, please. We've received comments back from Blue Water Recycling and from the Grand River Conservation Authority, both have expressed no concerns with the application, and no comments have been received from the public. Public meeting for the zone change application was held at the Township of Perth East on May 9, and Perth East Council recommended approval in principle of the zoning bylaw amendment. If the official plan amendment is approved by the county council, this zoning bylaw amendment will be placed on the next Township of Perth East Council agenda for final approval. Any staff have no concerns with the official plan amendment? The proposed amendment allows for the conversion of the existing accessory building into a bed and breakfast establishment with reduced MDS setback requirements. And the application is consistent with the provincial policy statement, accounting of Perth official plan, and we feel that it represents good planning. And I'm available to answer questions.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? Seeing no one, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application, other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? Seeing no one, does the applicant or the applicant's agent wish to make a presentation or speak with respect to the application? On screen, we're going to have... Okay, we have the... Good morning, welcome to Perth East Council, and the floor is yours.
Good morning, thank you.
Oh, we can't hear you, just give it a second.
Okay.
Okay, try now.
What about now? Can you hear me well?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So good morning, community members and county staff. My name is Danielli, and I work as a planner at Selena Fatiemo, a London-based planning consultancy. We are coordinating the OPA and ZBA applications, and representing the landowner of the subject lands. Firstly, I would like to thank the township and county staff for their work. Jeff did an excellent job preparing the staff report, which we have carefully reviewed, and we welcome the approval recommendation. I just want to highlight some key points. So the proposed application is to permit a bed and breakfast establishment with an existing accessory building, which is located on a cleared portion of the subject lands. As outlining the staff report, the proposed application will not have a negative impact on agricultural operations or natural features. The applications meet all relevant land use policies and represent good value. Also, the township council has already approved the ZBA application in principle, and we respectfully request council's approval. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from members of council? Seeing no questions, thank you, and we will move on to our next public meeting. And the next public meeting is County Official Plan number 220, Macon Development, Inc., and we'll have Macon back to do that.
Thank you, Warden Naggetts, and members of Perth County Council. This may feel like deja vu, however, this is directly the adjacent property that we're being requested this morning. So this is for official plan amendment number 220. The owners are Macon Developments Limited, and the agent is MHBC Planning. The location is Part Law 23, Concession 2 Wallace Ward, Municipality of North Perth. Next slide, please. This is an outline of the subject property. So the current property does have a house on it and some outbuildings, including a drive shed. There are no barns on the subject property, so it doesn't have any livestock housing. The property is currently being farmed, save except for that little small isolated pond on the subject property, and that outline is in green. So it's directly adjacent to the lands that we just talked about previously earlier, and so it's outlined in green on this presentation. Next slide, please. So the request for this application is to include it in the Listowel Settlement area, so is application 220, as mentioned. Just a small change, so there is no R4 zone, just R3 and R5, so those will be the two zoning considerations in front of North Perth Council, and those would be addressed through the zoning and subdivision stage. Next slide, please. This is an outline of the subject lands. We went through this previously before, but there is an internal road network. This would connect with Line 87 to the north, so that is a municipal road to the north there, and then it would connect with Wallace Avenue to the south, or Walton Avenue to the south, sorry. So there is the connection through there, and then as well to the industrial and commercial lands to the west. And then for the future consideration, the lands to the east are also included in the draft official plan for inclusion within the Listowel Settlement area, so that would provide some connection to the lands to the east as well. Next slide. In support of the application, the applicants have completed a number of studies. They are the environmental impact study, which does address that small isolated pond on the subject property, and includes the relocation of them. There was an archaeological study submitted as well, too. I will note that the applicants did find a small piece of shared, which is a little piece of indigenous tool that they used on the subject property, that was reviewed with the archaeological consultants and the province, and that was deemed satisfactory with respect to the consideration. A planning and justusification report was submitted, and I will note that there is some MDS impacts on this land, so I will talk about that a little bit further, but they did provide a review of that, and staff have considered and supported that amendment as well, too. Functional servicing report for this subject land was completed by Walter Fede, so they did support it, inclusion of the stormwater management pond on the North Perth lands to the west. A municipal comprehensive review was completed through Watson Associates, that's part of the Perth County official plan. And then there was a traffic impact study as well, too, completed by Crozier, and the noise impact assessment as well, too, that addresses the berman separation requirement that would be addressed. So all the studies came back satisfactory to support the application. Next slide. Again, just to highlight again, this is the subject land that addresses the comprehensive of the two subdivisions. Next slide, please. On the Macon property, there was several comments. MBCA provided the same soil conditions comments as they did for the North Perth lands, so there is the request to include that in the draft plan conditions, that would come later on. The school board had requested some comments, just requests where they are looking at a potential school site in Listowel, so they just replied some feedback. We haven't heard back from the school board on this one, so there would be no impacts to the official plan amendment at this stage. We'll see what the school board has as part of future discussions with the zoning and the future subdivision. With respect to public comments, there was one neighbor that did provide some concerns with the official plan amendment, there was respect to the loss of farmland, capacity, hospitals, and schools, et cetera. We did look at those and consider that, however, that is considered as part of the Listowel Settlement area and future expansion. The school board item is being addressed, the hospital issue, we know it's safe, but at the same time, this is part of the future growth and development for the town of Listowel. A distant business owner did provide some concerns, not necessarily an objection to the official plan amendment, however, they did provide some concerns with the future ability to extend. That's the Listowel stockyards, so that would be subject to a normal consideration for any kind of businesses looking to expand in the future. And there was an additional neighbor that provided comments with respect to a future road connection, so they are asking for that road connection to the east, and then some sediment fencing around the site, which would typically be provided as part of the draft plan stage or the development stage, part of the servicing. Next slide, please. Just a couple pictures of the subject lands. So one is a picture of Line 87 looking east. You'll see that little red-covered building there, that's the barn located on the northeast subject property. That's where some, it's some, not always, they don't always have cows there, just typically cover metal through the summer months and that, so they provide some on-site accommodation. And then that is the subject property to the south. That's looking towards the east as well, too. That's of the implement dealer and the livestock facility as well, too. That's the livestock stockyards. Next slide, please. Just a picture looking south towards the property, that's the house there with the outbuildings of the drive shed. And then there's the picture looking north from Walton Avenue North, which is the dead end, that would be a future road connection to the north. Next slide, please. Staff have provided planning comments. It is, again, supported through the Northeast Listowel Master Servicing Plan. It is included within the draft official plan as identified for neighborhood. They are supporting studies, all the studies have supported the proposed inclusion for the lands within the Listowel Settlement area. Servicing is available for Phase 1, so the subject lands will be designated Phase 1, Phase 2. Prior to Phase 2 moving ahead, they will be required to install a pumping station at some point in time in future. And then the MDS consideration, and I'll flip to this in the next slide, but the MDS consideration, there is a small MDS portion, impact on the subject lands, about 700 square meters. Leaving that land off would create an undesirable agricultural lot, well below any kind of agricultural standard, so if you were to exclude that land, that would actually be well below it. There is a house to the north already that already impacts that agricultural property from the MDS consideration, so there is already impact from MDS on that house. So inclusion within the settlement area would not create any undue impact that's already happening to that farmer. Then no restrictions from the stockyard, MDS, the MDS considerations from the province doesn't include stockyards, that's a municipal consideration as far as setbacks, there's not, that's not part of the inclusion of the MDS. And then density is encouraged and limited in some areas, again, as mentioned, that's that noise buffering consideration, so we'll see a little bit of lighter density along that line, they can't do anything more than, I think, a two-story or three-story, so that's some limitations there. Next slide, please. That's just an outline of the MDS impacts there. So the measurement from the house to the north, even touching the southern part of the property, that goes about, that's fairly close, the MDS, that's the size of the area that we're talking about, so primarily rear yards from any kind of future development that may take place there. They can look at buffering, we might look at additional setbacks, so that would be addressed through the zoning and subdivision stage. So it is a fairly small area. As mentioned, to leave that off the property, that would create a fairly, almost unserviceable lot, so you wouldn't be able to service that from a typical agricultural standard, so it makes a fairly undesirable lot. That's why staff have asked to include it. Next slide, please. So planning does support the application, I won't read the recommendation, but our recommendation and request is that Perth County Council approve the application and official plan amendment.
Okay, thanks, Nathan. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? If you would come to the...
Opposition, or, I want to speak for, not opposition.
Well, okay.
You'll get your chance.
You'll get your chance.
Okay.
So is there anyone present who wants to speak in support of the application?
Yeah.
That's you, okay? If you would like to come up to the table, please, and give your name and your address.
Honorable counselors, I've never, hardly ever done this before, so, I'm Curtis Martin. I, my address is 6053 Line 89, R1 Gownstone, and I also own a Edie's Place store at 1180 Wallace Avenue North. It's right in the corner of that proposal you're making, and I'd like to have services when they do this proposal. And I understand my neighbor, Wade Beer, is a surveyor, and he said I probably allowed to connect into services when they get, the water and sewer goes up through there. So I'd like to, I'm all for the expansion and the development, and I'd like to connect into water and sewers. And that's just, that's my question, if I'm allowed to, or what the, what the...
That would be up to North Perth Council and staff to make that decision, whether or not you could be connected into it.
Okay, great. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in support? Does the applicant or the applicant's agent wish to make a presentation?
Again, members of council, here at SHOVA, MHBC Planning, here this time on behalf of Macon Developments, Inc., and here in support of the staff recommendation, and Nathan has done an excellent job summarizing, and I have a similar slide deck, just going through a little more detail and elaborating on some of the things that Nathan has spoke to. Next slide. So again, as you've heard, we were at the time when we made the applications, at the same time as the North Perth lands, late fall, were suggesting a special policy area. That was sort of the tradition in Listowel, to re-designate areas for residential as a special policy area. Our understanding now will be re-design... Our understanding now will be re-designated to a low-rise residential designation as part of this recommendation, so that's why that text is written that way. Not before you this morning, but will be before North Perth, will be the zoning that will come later, as well as the draft plan and subdivision. But as Nathan indicated, there will be a variety of residential housing types and forms, from singles, street towns, cluster towns, so a broad range and mix of housing types and subdivision. Next slide. Again, that's, that's, the subdivision is still in process, we're receiving comments as we speak and being revised, and will be before you at a later date. This property is about 43 acres, again, combined with the North Perth lands, and then the broader area outlined in purple there is the northeast master plan area. So this was always contemplated as part of that study that the municipality undertook to service this area, which is currently under, not on private services, and to, for the sole purpose and intention of bringing to the urban area full municipal services. So this development is really consistent with that, that direction that was, and that study that was initiated by the municipality. It was certainly a very forward-thinking approach by the municipality to, to look at this area, to not only service it, but also look at bringing in additional lands to service their growing needs for this area. Again, these, the lands that are within the municipality's lands are part of the urban fringe area, and they're zoned and designated agricultural, these particular lands, so we're looking to re-designate them, as I said, to residential. There is a dwelling on the property right now, which will be demolished in the fullness of time. Next slide. So at this point, you've heard me previously say that one road will be shifted down through the North Perth lands. That similar revision will be made to our subdivision. I've spoke to the compatibility or mitigation with respect to the employment lands. There will be a berm between that interface, all along that interface, between the employment and the residential lands. And as you've heard Nathan say, in terms of the height restrictions, in terms of ensuring that the residential uses are not more than two stories, so that the living spaces aren't over top of that berm. There is, you can't quite see it, but there is a notion of a trail along, a north-south trail along that boundary to connect, and which is consistent with the municipality's trails, master plan direction. So intention is to provide those connections and work with the municipality on that subsequent design through the plan and subdivision process. The stormwater management for the northern portion, I would say, of the lands will be draining to the north, draining into the shared storm management pond on the municipality's lands. There is an existing stormwater management pond to the south, which this previous application, I think John illustrated that, that picture of the stormwater management pond. That is the same pond that you'll see the lotting at the bottom portion of the subdivision. That is our phase one. That can go today on existing services. So those lands can go immediately, and that is the intention. The other portion of the lands will require additional services, like extension of sewers and pumping stations primarily. Again, all being funded through area-specific development charges that are being developed by the municipality. Next slide. So this is just a breakdown of the, the density and the unit breakdown that's contemplated. Again, this is not before you today in terms of the official plan. We're not dealing with the subdivision, but just, this is just giving you an indication of sort of the mix and range of housing types that are contemplated, and with a total density range of 68,4 units per hectare. So quite a dense, quite a significant amount of multiple residential dwellings, which will provide alternative forms of housing, but more attainable forms of housing for the community. Next slide. I should mention, all these dwellings will be, will be able to accommodate secondary suites, which is also another form of attainable housing. In addition to the design of the subdivision, we have a nice central park, fairly significantly size. That circle you see is that walking radius, that five-minute walk, so not only being able to serve the residents within this community, but beyond the size of a park. And like I said, we're going to have trails in and around and connections to that trail. You can see that green line in the middle of the two plans will be the trail connection, which then will loop into the stormwater management pond and then connect to the existing trails north of line 87 at the corner of 87 and Wallace. Next slide, please. So again, this is just illustrating the various road connections. It's a, it's a pretty simple plan in terms of what we call grid or modified grid, but we have the nice connections for the flow of traffic and distribution of traffic, either to line 87 or down to Walton and/or to Wallace through the industrial lands. So again, multiple points of access, and also we have the trails and trail networks to encourage sort of alternative forms of transportation. Next line. Again, this is just illustrating the land use designation that we're asking for this morning, and this is consistent with your growth strategy as part of your official plan review in terms of identifying the need for additional lands in Listowel. I think the previous public meetings spoke to the land needs that are required in Listowel. This will certainly satisfy those needs by the study process. Next slide. And won't belabor this too much because this will be, this is getting into the weeds and the details, but again, the zoning that we're requesting will provide for smaller forms of housing, more density, and a mix and range of housing forms and types. Next slide. And these are the studies that were done. I'm not going to belabor that. And next slide, I think. And with that, I would just say that, like I said earlier, I support the staff recommendation and then ask that you as well do, and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good, thank you. Any questions from members of council? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Thury Warden. Here, is there still some ongoing discussions with regards to helipad and anything with that?
To you, Madam Warden, that's a great question. There were, there is an issue raised with the adjacent helipad on the auction property, which is on the very corner. This is a helipad operated by Orange, and it provides that helicopter service to the local hospital. We have actually met with them yesterday, and we are in discussions with them to look at options for relocating that helipad. With this development, and even if future development goes to even further east, as contemplated by your draft and the current official plan, they're indicating that it will be compromised in the sense that they will need further approvals from Ministry of Transport Canada, which is quite costly. They can do it, but it's a costly thing, it's something they're looking to avoid. So we are looking at options to relocate them. And the benefit with this plan is that, you have heard me say, we have to rely on servicing that hasn't been built yet to develop that northern part. We have time. It's probably another five years by the time we get to that northern part of the plan and subdivision. So we have time, but we are, we've already engaged with them. Couple of other matters, I just like, if I can, that I neglected to raise, or where it matters, or questions that council raised about affordability. We are looking at options there. Can't commit to anything just this yet, because we still have to have some discussions with local staff in terms of thinking, but I can say we're, we're thinking about it and looking at options there to, to address sort of the comments they had with respect to providing affordable housing. And then the last question, there was comments, Nathan mentioned it, about the adjacent neighbor in the auction property and the compatibility and their ability to expand. We are, they're in agreement, we've had discussions with them, and they're okay with allowing for some landscaping on their property to allow for some additional mitigation or buffering, and our client is amenable to providing for some of that landscape and buffering on their property to help mitigate. But again, we're getting into the weeds and the details. We're still up here on the official plan, but when we get down to those details in the draft plan, which hopefully, like I said, will be back before you this year with those details, then we'll have a lot of that answered for you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Deputy Warden, Callan?
Yes, so thank you, Thury Warden, and thank you, Nathan, and appear for your presentations. I had some other comments, but that's because you're looking after the orange there. You talked again about affordable and attainable, and you know, we keep going down this rabbit hole about affordable and attainable. And when are we going to realize that what is affordable to me is totally different than the 31 people in this audience out there? So I wouldn't get too caught up, caught up in that. This is a wonderful design here, a great plan, and totally supportive. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If not, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
To our next public meeting, and it's Perth County Official Plan Amendment for 227, the Van Newland property, and Nathan's going to present.
Thank you, Warden Eggers, and members of our county council, I think the last presentation today for the public meetings. Glad here to present official plan amendment number 227. The owners and applicants are Frank and Melanie Van Newland, and the agent is Patterson Planning Consultants on behalf of Scott Patterson. Location and lot is lot 2077, on the north, and it's probably North Perth. It's in the map, it's just located just northeast of Moncton there, so that's the approximate location, so just a little bit to the northeast of Moncton. Next slide. So they are requesting official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment. That is the subject property outline. They do run a large dairy farm operation, so they are asking for some on-farm labor accommodations to be provided as part of this. So that is the official plan amendment request. Currently, the official plan allows for family members as well as some minor accommodations, specifically temporary. This is a request for a permanent on-farm labor accommodation, so this has been presented in support by North Perth Council as well. Next slide, please. I won't go through this entire OP provision, so there is an outline. As mentioned, this is a request for permanent on-farm labor accommodation, so this would be a stick-built house, so they would be locating a new pad and frame, and then framing up for the accommodation is allowing, is requesting up to 10 occupants of the house. Those would be up to 10 folks, that would be addressed through the zoning, but the request for the official plan is to allow for the permanent structure of this. Next slide, please. Just an outline of the proposed labor housing locations, so just close to line 57 there, good sightlines, good access for the applicants and proponents. It's approximately the same distance from the barns as the existing house on the property, so the Van Newlands live there, that is their home and permanent address. So it's about the same distance really from those barn facilities, so as mentioned, staff have, I've looked at it, it's got great sightlines, fire staff and building staff have reviewed, and they were okay with it. One small note I will mention, and this was raised by the Mr. Patterson, is that the site no longer requires site plan approval, so subject to the official plan and zoning go-through, they would apply for their building permit because it is below that 10 units. Next slide, please. Just a draft reference for council's consideration, we just wanted to outline this. So it does show every occupant providing their own bedroom, so there's no shared bedroom, there would be individual bedrooms provided. There is a shared living and kitchen facility, so that's part of the shared accommodations, as well as a shared washroom facility. And then there is laundry in that as well, too, so they would provide, but some nice separation. It does provide some privacy for those individual bedroom units, which is kind of nice, so staff were supportive of that and a lot of discussions with the Van Newlands, but they were also supportive of that as well, too. Next slide, please. Just a couple of pictures of the subject property. I don't know if you can see, but there's some small dots there, that's the approximate size and location of the future build. Just right now, it's a grassed area, it's not being cropped, I think they may just cut the, maybe, I think they just actually cut the grass there. They do have some horses in front of the property, so it might be used for hay every once in a while, but currently it's not being intensely agricultural, really passively. Next slide, please. Public comments, too, the neighbors did provide letters of support in support of the application, so they did mention that they were supportive of it. One neighbor did express some concerns with the farming operation, new housing, and just the overall size. As mentioned as well, too, North Perth staff also supported, our North Perth council also supported this, so that we did come to North Perth Council. And then staff and agency comments, no comments from staff or agencies. This would be entirely on private services, they would have to put in a new septic system. I believe they might access through the existing well system there as well, so this would be entirely private services. Next slide, please. Any comments? It is supported through the on-farm use for the OMA for guidance documents. It is up to 10 bedroom units, so they are providing up to 10, so it does fall below that site plan threshold, so they're not required to get site plan approval. Good access and high visibility, so it's not tucked away behind the barns or anything like that, it's right up near the road, great access and visibility. Farming operations, so they are a large dairy farm, they do, are asking for some additional help to accommodate that, so rather than place them in town, they are located a little bit closer to their farm. Close proximity to the existing residence, it's on their home farm, so that's part of their own operations, so they are maintaining good access and serviceability of that. It's not supported through severance in the future, so they couldn't come back and sever this off, for instance. That's a big comment that we would do want to highlight. They wouldn't meet the MDS requirements as part of that future severance, so they wouldn't be allowed to separate that. So that is now part of their farming operation and integrated into that. Meets the MDS because it is on the subject land, so it's not a separate unit, it doesn't meet that MDS. The draft official plan also, we want to highlight, it does mention some supportable policies around that, so we are shifting away from kind of that restriction on the temporary or only family members living there, so it does provide some on-farm labor accommodations as well. And next slide, please. I will read through the recommendation, but Perth County staff are supportive of this application, and we're requesting that Perth County Council also supports this.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? See no one. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application, other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? See no one. Does the agent, we have Scott Patterson with us this morning on Zoom. Good morning, Scott. Good morning, Scott, are you there? Nathan?
I will note that, if he's not there, I will note that Scott also had a presentation as well, too, with another council, so he did send his conflicting interest, so I don't know if he's, or he might come, but Scott did send an email this morning that says, I don't have a presentation regarding Van Newland, and I am in agreement with the staff report and recommendations. So I don't know if Scott does come on, but he did send his regrets this morning. Apologies.
Okay, thanks, Nathan. Are there any questions for members of council? Jerry?
A couple, first one's a technical one.
Second, Jerry, we can't hear you. All right, try now.
Just a couple, the first one's a technical one, and the report says the letters from the people who submitted letters of support and not support are to be attached with the report, I just can't seem to find them. Maybe you can do that later. Is it, what's the chance for the, what is it, up to 10 bedrooms? Is there any chance that in the future, someone, I want to say off the street, but anyone could go in there and live? Or is this specific for just this farming operation for their employees? I just want a confirmation on that.
Through the warden. This is on their property, so they are inviting folks to come on there and maintain, that's their control of that, so this is intended for farm labor through there. As far as rentals go or things like that, that does create some compatibility issues through that. It doesn't, if staff aren't aware of it, staff aren't aware of it, but it does create some challenges if they were to invite, say, like turn into a wedding menu or something like that, does create some compatibility issues, but they really, the intent is for on-farm labor, and because of the size of their operation, it is our understanding they would use it as such.
All right, and then the letters were added to the documents.
The document center.
The document center, so they are-
Just for reference.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Scott's joined us now. Scott, is there anything that you wish to add?
Good morning, Mayor Eggers and council. Nothing further to add this morning to Nathan's presentation. Here on behalf of the property owners in full support of the staff report. With regard to Counselor Smith's questions, I think the policy and the zoning regulations would speak to it being on-farm labor, so it would really be a by-law enforcement issue if it came to that. And speaking with my clients, there's definitely not an intent to ever rent it out to third parties or people that don't, aren't involved with the farm operation. To be honest, I never thought of that proposal actually happening. It's, it's not something I considered, and the expectation is that all of the residents of this structure would be associated with the farm itself.
Okay, any more questions, excuse me, from members of council? If not, thanks, Nathan. Okay, so is there any other business we have? Any announcements? And now we're going to adjourn our public meeting at 10:00. And now we're going to adjourn our public meeting at 10:00. Counselor Dermott, second by Counselor Agerson, favor carried. And we're going to regular council, being reconvened at 10:31 a.m. Need a motion for that? Counselor Dermott, Counselor Trunkowski, in favor, carried. Okay, get my stuff together here. Now we're having a presentation from Stratford Perse for Business. We have Holly and Janice with us. Welcome, ladies. If you'd like to come up to the table, that'd be great. Welcome to Perth County Council. Where's yours?
Thank you, Warden Eggers and council members. I'm Holly Mortimer, here from the Stratford Perse Center for Business. I have my colleague Janice, who is over there, and I'm here to talk to you today about things that we have done over the past year and some success stories that we have seen and who we are and what we do. So if we could start the slides, that'd be great. Introduction is about to happen, and I'm going to go through some of our annual stats as far as what we have accomplished over the past year. I'm going to talk to you a bit about some county success stories in our client database, our summer company program, and round it out with our foodpreneur program. So that's me. I am the business advisor at the Stratford Perse Center for Business. We support small business clients in the city of Stratford, Town of St. Mary's, and throughout Perth County. And I have been here for 13 years, and I run the summer companies, starter company program, and core programming, which is generally one-on-one consults with our clients. Excellent. I thought it would put some faces to what we do, because we are out in the boat a lot, and hopefully, if you see us, you can come over and say hi. This is Janice, who is with me. She is my operations and administrative lead, and without Janice, I wouldn't do anything any day, so she is an organizer and I am not. So this is Janice, and she helps me run all the programs that we have. Okay, is our communication and marketing lead, so if you do have anything that you, or often, we will have things that we would love to share with you, and they will come from L K's desk. And next slide. And Joni is our CEO, so we do exist under the umbrella of Invest Stratford, which is where I sit and occupy space, and Joni is our CEO and helps guide me on the projects that we undertake. So in our core services, we have three, sorry, in our services, we have three pillars. We have core services, which are the one-on-one consults with clients. They can range anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes, and we are incredibly customized in what that is. So it can be anything from, I want to start a business, to I have a business and it's not going so well, I have a business and it's going great and need to expand, and those are the things that we kind of typically address inside of core services. We have the summer company program, which is our youth entrepreneurship grant program. It is funded by the province of Ontario and the Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade, and it is a grant program that gives $3,000 to, let's see, our seven individuals, to, who are students in either secondary or post-secondary education, and they want to see what entrepreneurship is all about in their time off. And then the Starter Company Plus program is another grant program funded by the province of Ontario, and it is a grant that is for young businesses, so either in startup phase or I should be classified as under five years in existence, and they want to either learn how to run a business or how to expand their business, and then they will spend some time with me and our mentorship team, and they will get $5,000 in granted funds to help fund their projects. Those are the three kind of pillars of our services. Next slide. So here are our stats, and these are as of March 31st, 2024. We helped 27 new businesses start. We helped 26 new businesses sustain and stay afloat. We helped 33 businesses expand, and in all of the time that we hang out with people, we have helped them create 173 jobs in our region. And outside of all of the things that we do, we saw over 200 and, well, 205-plus people or businesses over the past year, which is a significant increase in years before. So we work with over 200 clients, as I just stated, and we are seeing some trends in small businesses. Many of you are out in the community, I'm sure you're seeing a lot of the same trends. We have been working with more millennials and Gen Z. When I started 13 years ago, it was definitely more of a Gen X baby boomer situation, and it's interesting to see what Gen Z is bringing to the table as far as their small business aspirations. Brick-and-mortar businesses has become less desirable, so as it has become more challenging for people to either obtain leases or purchase buildings, they have decided to, and a lot of the Gen Z entrepreneurs are risk averse, so they would prefer to start their businesses digitally, or so e-commerce businesses, or as a side hustle before they decide to invest in a, in a space and take that on. So that has become a challenge for all of our downtowns. How do we fill the vacancies and sustain those businesses? More service-based businesses, there's always been a strong component to that, but what I find is really interesting, as our population ages, that there are more people that are looking at businesses that serve, say, a 50 to 85-year-old age bracket, and they are kind of be kind of anything and everything, and it's really exciting to see how great that people can get. The pop-up model is a new one, where there may be somebody who wants to test a business out, and we're seeing a lot of that, where a business owner who has a brick-and-mortar invites other businesses in to experiment with their space, so they do not have to kind of sign leases or short-term leases. They can come in and see how that goes with them. And then granted funds are rapidly disappearing. It is easily the most asked question I get. Hey, I'd like to start a business, are there any grants? And up until March 31st, my answer would be, there's some thing, and the majority of the grants that were provincially funded and federally funded have been decreased, with the exception of summer and starter company, which were increased, which is good news and challenging news. Next slide, please. So now I'll talk to you about some fun things, our success stories. We work with a number of businesses, and I brought just a few of them here to highlight to you today. I don't know if any of you know Stephen Beaumont, but Stephen is kind of ticked many boxes in our space. Stephen owns Chalk, Fine Chocolates. He is currently located in Town of Shakespeare and is looking to investigate some expansion projects. So Stephen was a recipient of our Starter Company Plus award last year. Stephen also won the Emerging Business Award at the most recent Chamber Awards, and we're really excited for what he's up to and how he's bringing his love of art and chocolate together to create some really exciting and interesting chocolate offerings. Okay, next. This is Erin Swinkles. Erin is, has Pearl Inspirations. Erin has traditionally been a speech and language pathologist, and she is also a graduate of our starter company, left a very traditional position to start her own business out in the county, has purchased a building, and will officially open this summer, I believe. And yeah, really excited to kind of try and support Erin. So the grant was, we were able to kind of connect Erin with funders, who were able to fund this really exciting and well-needed specialist who specializes in, excuse me, elementary students and who have autism and with special needs in the school system, and she has a whole kind of great plan for what this is going to look like in the next year. It's really exciting. And then in our summer company program last summer, as we have not officially started our new version of that, we have Nick Huben, who is out in Perth West, and Kelty, who is North Perth. Kelty is Cakes with Kay, and she started an ice cream cake business, and I just wrote a letter, a recommendation for Kelty for her university studies for a scholarship program, and she is continuing to create her cakes on the side, so that's really exciting. And Nick started a hockey school, and he started it in Stratford and moved it back out to the county, into his barn transformed into an arena, where he did some skills. Nick is a, an elite hockey player, and we gave him a grant to help build that hockey school amongst many, many others. And last, last year, I want to thank county for investing in this program, where we outgrew the funding that we were allotted, and we had, I believe, two additional summer company students funded by county council, so that was amazing. Next slide. Finally, I'll talk a bit about our Foodpreneur Advantage partnership with council and the SBC in London, which is me in London. The SBC in London recognized that there was a gap in the assistance for CPG, so consumer packaged goods, people who are creating something, say, in their home, sauces, jams, chips, whatever, lots of different things, all these specialty pieces, but they were struggling to find places to expand and grow. So they created a specialty program called the Foodpreneur Advantage Program, and it is, has like a dual level. At the free level, it is a six-week mentorship program, and where you'd be virtually and in person, and they have experts kind of with, that are kind of teaching them in labeling, regulations, marketing, cost analysis, profitability, all the things that I would do, but in a very specialized way. And we have had 25 businesses, the majority of them have been in the county, enrolled in this program. We partnered with Perth County to deliver this program, and they have two more sessions left, so they have four sessions each year. There will be a fall and a late fall session. The Scale Up Program, which is another component to the Foodpreneur Advantage Program, is part of the Starter Company Plus Grant Program, where if there is somebody who is well on their way, earning 50,000, over 50,000 in annual gross revenue, and would like to explore what their options are getting on national grocery chains, they have a program in partnership with The Grove in London, which is a subsidized space where they can go in and use all of their kitchen equipment and packaging and labeling in partnership with Vanshaw College, where they will get a grant to help them grow their packaged goods business. This program is on an annual basis, and they are looking at expanding even further beyond this, but those details are to come. This is as of March 31st. We have had 10 additional enrollments in the program since then. And that's pretty much it. Before, I kind of say, if you have, ask if you have any questions and tell you how to get ahold of me, I wanted to also comment on the summer company program. We do have a launch on July 4th that will be circulating out to Meredith and Justin, and they can distribute it to you guys, where you can come and meet all the students and ask them. We have a couple of farmers and a whole, actually, interesting new, brand-new mix. No landscapers this year, which is unusual. A couple of roadside farm stands, let's see, car detailers, various, many different, many different things, actually, keyboard specialists who create custom keyboards. I would love to invite you to come and meet them, and we will be distributing that, so you don't have to worry about that is, but it is July 4th here in the city of Stratford at 2:00. And this is how you find me. You can find me pretty easily, but I'm happy to chat. I will be out visiting all of the, doing the same kind of presentations, east and south, or no, west, north and south. I've done east, so you can find me there as well, if you're there. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Holly. Questions of the report, presentation? Counselor Kastenberg?
Thank you, Warden Eggers. Just a quick question about the distribution of your clients roughly by the geography. So you know, what proportion of clients that your center is serving are in geographic outside of Stratford and St. Mary's, Perth County?
Yeah, so after Stratford, Perth County is our kind of next largest client segment. We do track them by municipalities, so the four lower tiers as well. I would say North Perth, obviously, by kind of population distribution comes next, but I'd say 25% of our client base comes from the county, and it's generally located in Town of Mitchell, Shakespeare, Milverton, Atwood, and Listowel, and then various spaces in between, kind of trickle-down as well.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we have a motion that council receives a presentation, Stratford Perse Center for Business, from Stratford Perse Center for Business for Information. Moved by Counselor Duncan, second by Counselor Orr, all in favor.
Thank you for your time.
Great presentation. Okay, we're going to get through the planning things, and then we're going to have a short break. So the first planning report is, was County Official Plan 220. It is the Macon Development, Inc. It was done by Nathan. Nathan, is there anything you wish to add? You can come table, please.
I have no, through your, through the Warden, I have no additional comments to add. Staff are supportive of the request, the official plan amendment, but I'm happy to address or answer any questions if they come up.
Okay, are there any more questions of the report? If not, we have a motion that council receives, the County of Perth Official Plan Amendment Number 220, Macon Development, Inc. report, and if council approves the official plan amendment number 220 to the County of Perth Official Plan, submitted by MHBC Planning Limited on behalf of Macon Development, Inc., affecting lands described as lot 23, concession to 5917, line 87, Listowel Ward in the municipality of North Perth. Moved by Counselor, Deputy Warden Callum, second by Counselor Dermott. Any questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, the next report is the official plan number 221 in the municipality of North Perth. Nathan?
Thank you, Warden Eggers. Through you, I have no additional questions or comments, but staff are supportive of the official plan amendment and would request council endorsement, but I'm happy to address or answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? If not, then we have a motion that council receives, County of Perth Official Plan Amendment Number 221, municipality of North Perth report, and that council approves the official plan amendment number 221 to the County of Perth Official Plan, submitted by MHBC Planning Limited on behalf of the municipality of North Perth, affecting lands described as lot 24, concession to 8331, road 164, Listowel Ward in the municipality of North Perth. Moved by Counselor Kastenberg, second by Counselor Smith. Any questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, the third one is the county, thank you, Nathan, County of Perth Official Plan Amendment Number 225, and that's for 2467858OntarioInc. And that was done by John this morning. Are there any questions, comments on, oh, I'm sorry, you get to speak first, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Warden Eggers.
I'm on a roll.
Just a few additional, just kind of reiterating a few things. Matters pertaining to site plan, staff believes should be addressed at site plan stage, so you know, matters pertaining to driveway access, privacy, and things like that can all be addressed at the site plan stage. Right now, we're looking at the question about the official plan and density matters, as well as, you know, when it comes to affordability, since we can't require the applicants to set a price, the next best thing would be to provide or have the applicants deliver something with, you know, a bit of an increase in density, something a bit more attainable, such as, attainable or achievable, I guess, such as townhomes. So those are the final comments I'll make, and can I answer any questions?
Okay, thanks, John. Questions of John? Counselor Trunkowski?
Well, thanks, Warden Eggers, through you. So, planner advice, I had a couple of questions. The first question on the proposed townhouse units, is there any potential for secondary units to be created within this development? That's my first question.
So through you, Warden Eggers, the potential is, the Planning Act sets out as a right zoning, however, they would need to provide an additional parking space, and as there's not enough space for that additional spot, it's not being considered at this time.
Okay, thank you. Second question, could you just remind us of what the required density ranges are for this kind of development? I think I caught it at the presentation, but I had 30 to 50 units per hectare. Is that the correct number?
Yeah, so through you, Warden Eggers, in the Listowel Ward official plan, it's 30 to 50. In areas east of Listowel, it's 25 to 40. And this being 31, excuse me, 31.7 units per hectare meets both those requirements or guidelines.
And what about my third question, then Planner Vice, is what about future guidelines or requirements for density? Will this development at 31 units per hectare achieve? Will that be in conformance with future requirements, to the best of your knowledge?
So through you, Warden Eggers, the draft OP does a little bit of a different density targets. It targets 30, I believe it was 30 some odd percent for townhouses, medium-density developments in general. So it doesn't do it on a units-per-hectare base. But in general, the need for townhouses and medium-density, I believe that the subject application would meet those.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? If not, we do have a motion. We have a motion that council receives the County of Perth Official Plan Amendment Number 225 for 2467858 Ontario, Inc. report, and that council approves the official plan amendment number 225 to the County of Perth Official Plan submitted by MHBC Planning Limited on behalf of 2467858 Ontario, Inc., affecting lands legally described as lot 2, registration plan 290, which is 1020 Walton Avenue North, Listowel Ward in the municipality of North Perth. Do we have a mover and a seconder for that motion? Moved by Counselor Orr. We have a seconder. Counselor Mackenzie. Okay, comments or questions? Counselor Kastenberg?
Thank you, Warden Eggers. I mean, this is a delicate one, certainly. In North Perth, you have the opinion of North Perth Council on this, that this development is not particularly welcomed in the community by its council. And I feel it's incumbent upon me as the mayor of the community to raise that point. You know, I'm one who is not a fan of NIMBYism. I have to admit that. And there is a strong potential for this to be perceived as sort of a NIMBY choice that we're making. I can only speak for myself. In this case, I have not seen enough evidence or heard enough commitment to do something about affordability in this project. And that's what led to me agreeing with my colleagues, who may have had differences of reasoning. There are certainly some technical challenges with this proposal, as you've heard. And yes, I understand that site plan could resolve some of them, but I remain concerned about this. And so therefore, I can state that I have voted at North Perth against this, primarily driven by affordability. And I will vote again against this at this council as well.
Okay, anyone else with comments or questions? Counselor Trenkoski?
Thanks, Warden. Through you. My concern, I know I raised, during the public meeting, I raised questions about pricing and so forth, but my concern lies with the density. I don't think there's enough density to meet the future density needs for the county. And there's no, it doesn't appear to be potential to increase the density through secondary units or other means. Whereas other proposals that have been put forth to this council have shown to fit the density targets well inside the minimum, well inside the range, and also offer future potential for secondary occupancy. So I, I'd like to see more yield in terms of the space that's going to be used. And I have difficulty supporting this application on that basis. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Orr?
As Mayor Kastenberg alluded to, it's a delicate one, because I'm looking at it as staff has done everything that was required, from the PPS to the North Perth standards, to our standards, to the official plan draft standards. There's, I would support this for the fact that we keep saying we need more housing. And I think this is a responsible way. There are certainly things that the parking bothers me. But I do, I do think that we've given staff all of this to do. I'd like to know, actually, in pre-consultation, like, when did that happen? And was this not discussed? Like, we've gone down a very far path for the amount of money invested to get us to this point. Was there not more discussion in pre-consultation?
Through you, Warden. Discussion about what specific items, just in general?
Yeah, like it is, I feel for the neighbors for the fact that, yes, this is a definite change to the neighborhood, but that impact, I feel, it's delicate. I see both sides.
So through you, Warden, intensification is just inherently difficult to achieve, especially with, you know, differing densities throughout all of our communities within Perth County. So, you know, it's always going to be difficult to achieve specific intensification. However, staff believe, you know, through pre-consultation and through the applications submitted, that this is an appropriate develop.
Okay, Counselor H. Johnson?
I agree with Counselor Orr on the fact that, yes, they met their loophole and everything they had to meet. And our planner just made a comment there that it was, that I already passed my thoughts on as far as density to Mr. Pierre over there. I realize people don't want development near their quote-unquote sanctuary. However, we have to change the way in which we do business. You can't keep sucking up 50 acres of prime farmland or low-density housing. Can't. That's, we just can't do that anymore. It's either higher density or no density. And I'm going to struggle to support this on the fact that I want to see, similar to Counselor Trenkoski here, I want to see higher density. Because I get told in planning reports all the time, we have to protect the farmland, we have to protect the farmland. You can't do a second lot here, you can't do this there. And yet, we'll take 50 acres and allow lower-density housing to be built on. You can't have your cake and eat it too. It's either one or the other, and I think you'd go far higher density. So I am going to struggle to support this at this point in time. And as far as the cost of these units, I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again, there's no such thing as affordable housing right now with today's interest rates, et cetera. Honestly, with the jobs that are becoming available now, people aren't going to be able to afford to buy these things really anyway, until interest rates come down. And if they don't come down in a hurry, there's going to be a lot of houses for sale. So you could have affordable housing. But at this point in time, I can't really support this.
Okay, other comments? Counselor Orr?
So if, as Counselor H. and Trenkoski, is there an opportunity, are you talking apartment buildings next?
I'm not the planner, I'm not the developer. I'm just saying I want higher density.
Through you, Warden. An increase in density is difficult here based on the linear nature of the property. So staff felt with the low density in the area, combined with, you know, the medium density proposed, it was sufficient to accommodate the neighborhood. You know, increase in density would be probably welcoming to the applicant. But as such, you know, we're looking at the application as submitted right now.
Okay, other questions? So just for clarification, you did mention that we're, today we're looking for a official plan amendment to change it from urban fringe to site-specific policies, right? So what they're proposing still can be changed when they do their site plan and when they do their zoning, correct?
Correct. Through you, Warden Eggers. The bylaw will say up to, essentially. So, you know, if the driveway aisle is determined, you know, to be a substantial issue, they could lower the density. But it's up to 19 cluster dwelling units at this time.
Okay. 225, right? Okay, sorry. So any other questions or comments? Okay, so we do have a motion on, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Mackenzie?
That's fine. I'm just wondering, and I don't know whether this is possible or not, John here, before we make a decision on this, if, well, it could defer a little bit more further clarification on this. Like, we seem to be stuck on density, you know, and stuck on the access to it. There's only one entrance in, and we saw comments from North Perth in regards to emergency vehicles. And certainly, if you're going to put any type of development in there, you have to have access for your emergency vehicles to get in and out easily. So I don't know if that's an option that would give the applicant a little bit more of an opportunity to tweak those things. And as John said, that can be tweaked in the site plan. But I guess what I'm looking at is if we turn this down now, then that is not going to happen. That's my comments.
But you have the option, if you want, wish to amend the motion to defer and get more clarification on those items? We can do that?
Well, I would make that a motion. I think it might help in this case.
Okay, so we have Walter moving, or Counselor Mackenzie moving an amendment. Do we have a seconder to defer it? Counselor H. Johnson? Okay. So it'll give the applicant an opportunity to go back and answer some of the questions that we've had this morning. Counselor H. Johnson?
I just want to see this turned down straight out. But again, we had comments about parking, traffic, emergency vehicles. Some of us over here were asked about density questions, if we could get some clarification. I think emergency vehicles could be one of your big causes, if you've got only three guest parking spaces, if I remember that correctly, and you've got 19 units, and then they're parked out on the other street, like, how are those emergency vehicles going to get in and out? You can put your helipad wherever you want it, it ain't going to matter, because you got to be able to get that vehicle in and out. You get that person to the helipad, if that's, if it's not bad.
Okay, anyone else with, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, just, yeah, so moving to defer and come back with some tweaks from our public, the public, to people that talk to, that are concerned, the neighbors, I don't think making little tweaks is going to satisfy them. I think they're going to still be concerned with the entire piece of property. So to defer and to come back, and we'll do this all again, and have our public comment again, I think something drastic needs to be done, not just little tweaks, so.
Okay, anyone else? So first, we're going to vote on the amendment, and the amendment is that we defer the application. Okay, all in favor of that? 2479 opposed. 9.
9. It's tie.
Tie, correct? Defeated.
Defeated.
Okay, then we're going to just vote on, on the, right? You counted with me, okay? Then we're just going to vote on the original motion then, because the amendment was deferred. So all in favor of the original motion? Opposed? Defeated. Okay, thanks, John. Now we're going to move on to County Official Plan Amendment Number 226, the Adams Application. And Jeff?
Thank you, Warden. I don't have anything additional to add, but I'm welcome. Any questions or any answering concerns you may have?
Okay, any questions of the report? If not, we have a motion that county receives the County of Perth Official Plan Amendment Number 226, Adams Report, and that council approves the official plan amendment Number 226 to the County of Perth Official Plan submitted by Zalinka Preamo, Inc., on behalf of Kevin Adams, affecting lands legally described as part lot 23 and 24, concession 52324, line 40, northeast Oak Ward in the township of Perth East. Do we have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Dermott moves. Counselor Orr seconds. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Jeff. And then we're going to move to the County of Perth Official 227, Van Newland and Nathan.
Thank you, Warden Eggers and members of council. Staff are supportive of this application and provided a recommendation, but I'm happy to address or answer any questions at this time.
Okay, are there any questions of the report? Counselor Smith?
Yeah, just, just going back to my comments during the public meeting, I'm not sure how this will be policed. We have people that need residences, particularly speak of my ward in the township of Milverton. We're looking for people to, people need rental units. I just don't want to see this piece of property with 10 units, open it up to the public and renting it for $500 a month, whereas we have people looking for apartments that are $2,000 a month. I, that's a big concern of mine, especially for renters that are looking for accommodations. And again, I know, Nathan, they spoke about, and Mr. Patterson, that it's for the site, it's for the labors, and we don't really have a means, maybe via complaints, whether the neighbors keep an eye on it and see they have, they're bringing in somebody off the, again, off-street, somebody that just rents and is not working there. So I'm hoping that we can kind of police that. So that's just my concern with the project. Obviously, the farmer, the great dairy farmer, we need, we need that. But that's just a concern of mine for the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kastenberg?
Thanks, Warden. You know, to Counselor Smith's comments, I mean, I share the sentiment, right? We view this as purpose-driven housing for the farm in question. And so I guess my question is, for the planner in this matter, can you think of ways that we might apply some kind of limitation? And at what stage should we do that to sort of ensure that this residential environment on a farm is intended to support the farm's operations?
Through the warden, I respond to Counselor Kastenberg's and Counselor Smith's question. The request is specifically for on-farm labor housing, so that is the direction, both in the official plan amendment and the zoning bylaw amendment. Bylaw, as mentioned by Mr. Patterson, bylaw would be the enforcement agency if there was a concern that was represented. I guess to comment back to as well, just, this does support their farming operation. I mean, I know $500 a month is a big deal from that, but that this is, does support that from on-farm labor accommodations. So it is rural, it is not within the town, so you'd have to rely on vehicle and things like that. So there's not that same sort of walking access and things like that. So, I mean, we're not aware of everything that goes on, but at the same time, I think there's be limited opportunity for, say, rental housing or supportable housing in this situation, both with the size of the dairy operation and what they're looking to manage for that. They are looking to support this specifically for their business interests, so.
Counselor H. Johnson?
I understand the concerns from our two councils so far, but having an agriculture background, I've been a dairy farmer and a Cadillac supporter and everything else, the last thing they want to do is rent out a room to somebody out of the city because of all the, A, biosecurity concerns, number one. The last thing you want is people on your property or farm that have nothing to do with your operation and a discussion. They will not be renting this out, especially now with avian flu and everything getting into dairy cattle. That will not happen. End of discussion.
Okay, anyone else? Questions, comments? If not, we have a motion that council receives County of Perth Official Plan Amendment Number 227, Van Newland Report, and that council approves the official plan amendment Number 227 to the County of Perth Official Plan submitted by Patterson Planning Consultants, Inc., on behalf of Frank and Melanie Van Newland, affecting lands legally described as on behalf of Frank and Melanie Van Newland affecting lands legally described as Lot Twenty, Concession Seventeen, Five, Seven, Three, Four, Line Fifty-seven, Elma Ward in the municipality of North Perth. With by Council Mackenzie, second by Council Kastenberg, all those in favor? Carried. Flight change of plans, we're going to let economic development present first, and then we're going to have a break. So welcome to Meredith, welcome to Helen, and welcome to Clara. Clara and Helen just joined us here at the county and welcome to Perth, so.
Thank you, Warden. And so I know between, I am, what's between you and break, so I will make this a quick presentation. With me, I have a couple of new faces with me today. We have Clara Leeny, she is our new tourism officer, so she'll be running our tourism program moving forward. And we have Helen Golo, Golo. She is our contact economic development officer. Justin Diaz has moved seamlessly into the transit position with Maggie's maternity leave. Justin is not here today because he is currently working with the Economic Development Students from University of Waterloo on a student, on a student project for us. Next slide. Oh, sorry, there's everybody's picture. Thanks, thanks, perfect. So business retention and expansion. Staff have been busy working on our BRNE program with several initiatives. I'm just only going to highlight a few today. So on April thirtieth, we hosted our business tour at Woodcock Brothers. Woodcock Brothers recently celebrated forty years of business right here in Perth County. As we look ahead, we have business tours booked at DNS Downham on June fourteenth and Between the Lines in Listwell on July eighteenth. We also have a Business After Five event happening on June nineteenth at Zare Insurance in Milverton. We've recently launched our Business Features Program, which is a part of our Prosper Perth County Initiative. Next slide. We continue to promote our workforce attraction and retention toolkit to employers on March twenty-seventh. We also attended a job fair in Kitchener promoting the available jobs that our businesses have within the county. We met with over three hundred job seekers. While we were there, we promoted the PC Connect service as a safe and reliable transit option to get folks from work and highlighted the businesses along the Perth County Rural Route and the Stratford-St. Aries and North Perth Program. Tomorrow, we're hosting an employer and educator roundtable, and also, there's fifty-one educators and businesses signed up to participate. We're hoping to collaborate and work together and promote and help guide our students to future career paths that are available locally. On June eleventh, we've partnered with our commodity groups, and we will be supporting the iFarm Community Barbecue, promoting careers in agriculture to a younger generation. Slide. So the 2024 Tourism Brochure was launched a few weeks ago. You all would have received a copy of that. We mailed out thirty-four thousand copies of that brochure to Perth County residents and surrounding areas. We've also delivered those brochures to a hundred and fifty local hotspots and Ontario Travel Information Centers. As we celebrate Local Food Week, I'm really happy to share with you that we've had an influx in participation in our Discover More Flavor Program, so we will be updating and printing a new program guide in the fall. And our newest signature experience, which is just playing in the background, was launched on May eighteenth, and it is our first winery in Perth County, so we're very excited about that. If you haven't had an opportunity to check out the Perth Farmhouse, please add it to your summer bucket list. Next slide. For PC Connect, a free ride program campaign was launched at the beginning of April. Approximately sixteen thousand information brochures were mailed out to introduce and remind residents that PC Connect is operating and is a safe and efficient way to travel throughout the county. We also partnered with Wellington County on a joint delegation to the Minister of Transportation, advocating for continued financial support beyond March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. In April, we saw just under seven hundred riders. And the PC Connect marketing campaign has reached over thirty thousand views and had just under a thousand click-throughs of people looking for more information on our programming. So you can find that video. It's just one of our videos that we do.
Gardening has always been my passion, but life has its twists.
More than a mode of transportation, it's a bridge between where I am and where I need to be.
Helping people stay fit is my passion, but the journey to work used to be a challenge.
Safe place for people with disability.
Getting to class used to be a daily struggle for me, but then I found out about PC Connect. No more long walks, no more missed buses. My ride to a better future.
The bus that gets me where I need to go, like accessing services that have become a lifeline for my family.
PC Connect isn't just a bus line, it's my way to work and my ticket to a brighter future.
Getting to my doctor's appointments is a breeze. PC Connect gives me the freedom to prioritize my health and get me back to doing what I love.
Using PC Connect lets me live life on my own terms.
My journey is my study time. PC Connect isn't just a bus line, it's my path to education, my ride to success.
With PC Connect, I'm always on time for my clients, ready to inspire and motivate.
Life has a way of surprising you. I used to drive, but now I'm grateful for PC Connect.
PC Connect.
PC Connect.
PC Connect.
PC Connect.
PC Connect.
My path to education.
To be independent.
Thanks to PC Connect, I can make every day count.
My key to health and the things that matter.
The bus that gets me where I need to go.
So that was the final video part mashup from our people of PC Connect programming. Next slide, and I think my presentation is over, and I'm happy to take any questions, should council have any?
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Councilor Aitchison?
Any questions, comments, you know, let us all, this is the start. It's been great, and I do realize that has its challenges to keep operating. So where would we have to be in rides per month to make that really self-sustainable? I know we have a meeting coming up, so I won't make the answer that today. But I've had a bunch of people call me in the last little while saying, how long is that PC Connect going to last? And I said, tell you better, wow. They say, well, every time I ever see it, there's nobody on it. Let's see if that's more down my end of the county. But we don't even actually have a route in Perth South, but they go through Perth South to get to the next destination. And they're always seeing the bus with no riders and going like, why is it still running? So it's just something I wanted to bring up. I said, I would bring it up, and you know me, if I say I'll bring it up, I'm bringing it up. So it's just something to maybe deal with when we do have our transportation meeting and et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you, Councilor Aitchison, and we, that is being addressed through our Transportation Committee. Just to answer your resident's question in regards to, you know, the number of riders, we had almost fifty-four hundred riders on our rural route in Perth County last year, and just under twenty thousand, or just, sorry, just under nineteen thousand for all of PC Connect, and that is both routes with riders. So obviously, we want it to be a self-sustaining program, and so we have, staff have been diligent at promoting the program locally to residents to use as an affordable way of transportation. We've also been very active in pursuing funding opportunities and advocating for continued funds to our provincial government, and we will continue to do that. Right now, the program will be running until March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. That is when the funding runs up, it's complete.
Okay, go ahead.
And I did have one other comment, and I honestly didn't know how to answer, but I sort of did. So there are some residents who use the service, but of, you know, the old Amish background, and they have to ride for hours in their horse and buggy to get to a pickup spot. And I said, well, there's not a whole lot we can do about that. And then I personally went so far as to say, well, we have friends in Urin County that we'd like you to go up there and pick them up. And I said, well, we're struggling to survive in Perth County. But people do realize it's out there, and they are using it, and you've done a great job of promoting it, don't get me wrong. But there are those little challenges, and then, you know, to ride their horse and buggy two and a half hours to get to a spot where they can get picked up to get to it, and they're usually for medical appointments, to be honest with it. But I suggested perhaps, and I don't know what the mobility bus service is like in a lot of municipalities, can you not maybe get the mobility bus to pick you up and take you to a pickup location for PC Connect? I don't know.
So through you, Warden, staff have been investigating options such as that, and on-demand options, and are currently just going through all the different scenarios of ways that we can improve the service, you know, the last mile issues that we have had, not just with our Amish community, with other residents as well. So we are trying to find a way to make it work, and the mobility bus has been part of that conversation.
Okay, other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion that council receives Economic Development Tourism and Expansion Q2 Update, June twenty-twenty-four Report. Moved by Council Mackenzie, second by Council Or, all in favor? Carried. Thanks, ladies. We're going to take a short break.
Excellent, so we are back. Councilor Casey, break, I did get your email, I don't know if you want to leave the meeting now?
Okay, so we're going to move on, we're going to go to Corporate Services. First report is the 2024 April Forestry Inspector Report, and Tyler's going to do that.
Excellent, through the warden, before council is the April 2024 Forestry Inspector's Report, prepared by Marvin Smith, the Perth County Forestry Inspector. In the month of April, Marvin completed six inspections in response of the submission of an NOI, and two inspections in response to the request from a landowner. If there's any questions, concerns, or inquiries, I'd be happy to take those to Marvin and bring them back to council.
Okay, any questions of the report? If not, we have a motion that council receives the April 2024 Forestry Inspector's Report for information. Moved by Deputy Warden Kellum, second by Council Kastenberg, all those in favor? Carried. Okay, then we're going to go into the Joint Accessibility Plan Update, and Tyler and Rachel, will you do that?
Excellent, thank you so much. So through the warden, before council is the Joint Accessibility Plan Annual Status Update for 2023. This is a requirement that we bring forward to council every year. For council's knowledge, the multi-year plan was presented and approved last year from twenty twenty-three to twenty-twenty-seven. Rachel has done majority of the work on this. We've gone to all the lower tiers, and the plan has been passed and posted on each lower tier's website. So we appreciate the work of all of the lower-tier staff that worked in relation with this project, as well as Perth County staff to put together this year's annual status update. Rachel's going to take over, she's got a very brief presentation, just highlighting some of the goals of the county, as well as our successes, so, Rachel?
Okay, I'm going to deliver it from here. So thanks, Tyler, through you, Warden Egits, and the council, thanks for having us today. As Tyler said, we're going to keep it really short and sweet, we know it's been a long one today, so we will just go ahead and get right into it. All right. Sorry. So just a reminder of why we're here, so our legislative requirements through the province under the AODA IAUP Sar standards. We are required once every five years to update our Joint Accessibility Plan. As Tyler said, we did that last year toward all of the lower tiers and also council, and that was passed and approved by everybody. It is accessible on our website, if anyone wants to go read the full plan. Some section of that legislation, we are here today to present an annual status report with regard to that accessibility plan. Okay, a reminder of what we handle here at the county level with the accessibility program. Again, just like at the lower tiers, I won't go through all the bullets here, but a couple of points to highlight. We do administer committee support for the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, which is also initially mandated, we have to have that. And that committee is joint, so it's a lower-tier, upper-tier effort. We're also happy to be a point of contact for any accessibility concerns at anyone at the lower tiers, or of course, departmentally at the upper tier, if anyone has any questions, concerns, or needs any resources, we're happy to assist with that as well. Now, last year, with our Joint Accessibility Plan, so that five-year sort of roadmap of where we're headed with our accessibility program, some of the highlights that we saw coming out of that in terms of the trends that were reported to us, both at the lower tier and the upper tier overall with our initiatives, included things like communication, education, diversity inclusion, looking at accessibility from an age-friendly lens with the aging population of Perth County, and then, of course, being a community leader in terms of accessibility at the county as well. Okay, at all of the lower tiers, we presented all of the individual accomplishments and goals for your lower tiers, but at the county level, we're just going to go through the county level goals and accomplishments over the last year moving into this year. So notable accomplishments at the county level, as everybody knows, of course, the facilities and public works teams were very busy in 2023. We saw an AODA compliant elevator installed in the courthouse. We also saw an installation of a fully accessible washroom on the second floor there at the courthouse, just across from the St. Yonder Street entrance. Aside from public works and facilities, legislative services assisted and actually developed new recruitment materials for our Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. That was sort of in tandem with our recruitment process as their term goes in tandem with the council term as well. So we did that and ensured that they were on board and on trade in terms of any new legislation requirements. As well, we provided a couple of training sessions to county and lower-tier staff on all text and then AODA training requirements. All right, moving into 2024 and beyond, of course, facilities and public works is highlighted here as well with the five-year old rental. Keeping accessibility for staff and public top of mind is what's sort of building and building that building. Communications is working with legislative services to remediate all existing website content. Again, that's a provincial mandate, so ensuring that everything on the website meets with kind of high accessibility standards. And finally, the archives is continuing our digitization project for local newspapers, again, increasing accessibility in person and online as well. With that, we are available for questions.
Okay, questions of the report? No, we have a motion that council receives a Joint Accessibility Plan Annual Status Update 2023 Report. Council approves the Joint Accessibility Plan Annual Status Update 2023, and let staff be directed to post a Joint Accessibility Plan Annual Status Update 2023 on the Perth County website. Moved by Council Aitchison, second by Council Smith, all those in favor? Carried. Okay. Thank you, Tyler and Rachel. Now we're going to go to Corporate Services, and we have Annette.
Good morning, everybody. This report takes you back to activities that took place in Corporate Services for the month of April. So I will keep it very brief, there are two things that I'd like to point out, however. The first is that the Ministry of Transportation performed an audit on the county's use of ARIS. So ARIS is a database that contains information about drivers and vehicle owners, which is used by authorized users in court services. So the county has a contractual agreement with ARIS, which allows specific staff members access. They can obtain information through errors, ARIS, about drivers and, as I mentioned, vehicle owners for limited purposes. So this contract contains provisions related to access, related to confidentiality, and as well as destruction of information. And so the purpose of the audit was to ensure that we are complying with that contract. If there are any issues, the Ministry of Transportation, they will inform us of the results of the audit. So that audit did take place in April, and we have not yet received any information back from the ministry, so we await to, we await the results. The only other thing that I'd like to point out is that the Perth County website remediation is continuing. So as Rachel and Tyler discussed, this is an important, this is an important initiation, initiative as it relates to accessibility. All of the pages within our website need to be compliant and remediated. So this process is mandatory for the county, and the province has set out a deadline, so that project will be continuing. So subject to any questions, I encourage you to review the report.
Okay, thanks, Annette, any questions? Okay, thanks, Annette. Any questions of the report? If not, we have a motion that council receives the Corporate Services April 2024 Update Report for information. Moved by Counsel Mackenzie, second by Counsel McDermott. All in favor? Carrie, Annette. Now we're going to go to mid-year activity report for the Stratford Perth Archives. We've got Betty Jo joining us on the screen, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden. Good morning, council and staff. The report that you have from Stratford Perth Archives today is an activities report for council's information and to ask council's approval of it to be submitted to the M S S C meeting that's coming up in a couple of weeks. I'd like to highlight a few items. The summer students here began work on May the 6th, and with their support, we were able to offer drop-in access on Saturdays at the archives until the end of August. The access is available on Saturdays by appointments the rest of the year. Otherwise, staff and students are continuing with projects like digitizing local newspapers and public outreach efforts, like working with community groups such as the Stratford and District Historical Society, talks at public libraries and newspaper articles. There is a sample of one of the articles from the archives written by a high school co-op student earlier this year that I've attached to the report for council's information. And with that, I will thank you all for your time today, and through you, Warden Eggers, I'd be happy to respond to any questions or comments that you may have about the report.
Okay, thanks, Betty Jo. Any questions of the report? Counsel McDermott?
Thank you, Betty Jo. Is the Ontario Geological Society, the first branch, is it now gone?
My understanding is that it is not gone. They, maybe a year or two ago, made a request to the provincial body that they would be operating as a virtual branch. And so, and I know that it's still active at the provincial level. I've been asked to speak to a meeting in August that's open to all members, and in communicating back and forth with the provincial office about that, I believe there are still around 100 active members. But they're not clearly operating in the way that they did before they took this step. There aren't, you know, regular in-person meetings here at the archives and that sort of thing anymore.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion that council receives a mid-year activities update report from Stratford Perth Archives for the M S S C meeting on June 20, 2024, and that council approved the report for submission to the M S S C meeting on June 20, 2024. Moved by Counsel Aitchison, second by Counsel McDermott. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Betty Jo. Enjoy the rest of your day. Okay, now we're moving on. We have the P O A Court Services Report, and we have Vicki with this this morning. So the key, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Warden Eggers and members of council. The report today provides an update on activities at the Provincial offenses Court Services office until the end of April 2024. Court Services staff continues to schedule early resolution meetings and trials. An early resolution meeting is a pre-court conversation between the defendant and the prosecutor to see if there's an opportunity to resolve the charge prior to going to trial. If there is a reduced charge that could be offered, these cases are adjourned to a court date to be heard in front of a justice of the peace. Currently, early resolution meeting dates are fully booked to mid-July. Court Services continues to work with the Regional Senior Justice of the Peace to secure extra blitz court dates. A blitz date is an additional court date provided by the Regional Senior Justice of the Peace that is not a regularly scheduled date to assist with addressing the volume and backlog of cases. The report shows the steady increase in the number of court appearances over the last six years. This increase implies that more defendants are challenging their tickets, given that the increase in the number of charges filed is not increasing at the same rate as the number of court appearances. The pending caseload continues to rise as well, which shows the increase in court activity and workload for staff. The distribution of revenue has been calculated based on actual fines paid and allocation of each offense. That does conclude my report. Please let me know if there's any questions.
Okay, thanks, Vicki. Any questions of the report? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that council receives the P O A Court Services Report for M S S C, an operational update report for information, and that council approves the report for submission to the Municipal Shared Services Committee meeting on June 20, 2024. Moved by Counsel Trenkowski, second by Counsel McDermott. All those in favor? Carried. Thanks, Vicki. Okay, we're going to move to Paramedic Services, and Mike is joining us on the screen this morning, so. Mike, good to see you. The floor is yours.
Mike, good morning. Through the Warden, thank you. So this is the M S S C report that you have before you for June 2024, and we're looking for support to bring that to the M S S C meeting on June the 20th. And, you know, just to highlight a couple of things with respect to some of the leadership changes in our organization with Mike. Going into retirement, we had Kelly Hanson move into our operations of quality and education. Doing a great job. Jenna is one of our new commanders, and Travis Coyle actually was one of our employees, came back to us as a commander of mobile integrated health, and we have three new acting commanders in our roles as well. So just lots of things that are going on in the report, and I won't go too far into them. Council had approved the tiered response, and once every four years, you work with us to have a look at tiered response, and so we will be visiting that over the next couple of years. But the last version of the last council has been fully implemented at this point. We do have a Ministry Service Review, which is like accreditation, that's coming up this December, so we're preparing diligently for that. And we are, what was the other thing I was going to say? And in the report, I also talk a little bit about Listowel Station, because we're going to need to have a conversation in the future about planning for Perth North with, based on the population growth and some of the needs that are going up there. So I'm pleased to take any questions. Should council have any?
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any questions of the report? Seeing none, we have a motion that council receives the Perth County Paramedic Services M S S C Meeting June 2024 Report, and that council approves the Perth County Paramedic Services M S S C Meeting June 2024 Report to be presented at the Municipal Shared Services Committee meeting on June 20, 2024. Moved by Deputy Warden Kellum, second by Counsel Aitchison. All in favor? Thanks, Mike. Okay, now we're moving to Public Works, and the first report is the Perth County Energy Conservation and Demand Management Plan, and we have Anna, Bill, and John joining us this morning, so. Welcome, Annette. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Warden and council. Thank you for having us this morning, or this afternoon. I'm proud to share with you our 2024 Energy Conservation and Demand Management Plan. We began working on this document in December 2023, and I've also been working with all of our local municipalities to complete their E C D M Ps as well. It's a legislative requirement to complete this document and submit it to the province before July 1st of this year, and five years in perpetuity. So plans in North Perth and Perth East were at the councils this week, so that was really exciting to see. And for Southwest Perth, we'll be going at the second council meeting in a month. So I'm happy to share ours with you today. So it starts with an inventory of our facilities and fleet and the emissions that those create. So nine out of the 12 facilities owned and operated by Perth County have experienced a decrease in greenhouse gas emissions. And that means that, on average, our facilities have had a 19.3% decrease in emissions over the past five years, so since 2018. The total emissions produced by the County of Perth, I'm excited to announce, have decreased by 13.8%, or just shy of 275,000 kilograms of emissions that we now do not produce. Fleet vehicles are also new for this analysis. They were not reported on in 2018. So Perth County runs a fleet of 45 vehicles, and these vehicles range from ambulance to pickup trucks to triaxle plows. Most of them are heavy-duty. These vehicles produced 73.5% of the county's total emissions, so they are a significant contributor to our emissions. And there's not a whole lot of light-duty fleet in there, but we've been able to analyze that more closely. So the total emissions for 2023 for the County of Perth operations was 1.03 million kilograms, or 1,035 tons. We do actually have some emissions offsets that we can share. So these are projects that we have taken on that will help reduce the amount of emissions that we produce, or at least offset them to get to that net zero target eventually. One is the solar array at Public Works in Mitchell, and that solar system produced 16,555 kilowatt-hours of electricity, offsetting the county's facility emissions by 6%. This system also avoided 497 kilograms of CO2 emissions going into the atmosphere. Although the Perth County Storage Program was not active in 2023, if it had been, the trees that were subsidized through this program for this year would have offset our county emissions by 4%. So that's a really positive thing to share as well. And going forward, we'll be able to claim those trees as offsets to our county emissions. One change that we did note, and which is pictured here in the top, is that we have seen a significant cost of the fuels that we use at our facilities go up. So although our usage has gone down, the cost of us using these fuel sources has gone up. In the case of natural gas, 31% since 2018, and in the case of electricity, it's gone up 12% since 2018. So this cost increase alone encourages us to investigate more offset opportunities, such as solar panels. The future strategies that we've identified for this plan and for our operations for the next five years include potential solar array expansion, passive vegetative cooling techniques, the adoption of E V or hybrid vehicles into the light-duty fleet where possible, and continued support of the Perth County Storage Program. So all of this continues to endeavor to meet the greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets that we set out in the 2021 Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan. So I am happy to take any questions at this time.
Okay, Counsel Orr?
Yeah, I have it. It's page 447, but it's the water usage in the facilities. I'm just kind of curious that the EMS headquarters, in comparison to 2018 to 2053, is so drastically hot. It was page eight? Your third slide, that one, right there. Just go down a bit. There we go.
John, go ahead.
Through you, Warden Eggers, yes. There was a water meter issue here at H Q, so. That has been looked into. It has been, the meter has been updated. And so, yeah, it is, it's a bit of a shocking thing to see. But I guess on the positive note, I think we benefited for about five years from the original meter, so. But yes, that's why you see the big spike. It is to do with the water meter.
Okay, other questions? Counsel McDermott?
Yeah, the solar in Mitchell, I'm really interested in solar. I understand there's a form of social good, or there's, you get different things from different, different results. I just wondered though if anybody's ever did like a return on investment, or to figure out whether this was the best way we could use that dollar with solar compared to something else? Like if anybody's ever kind of looked at that type of thing?
Yes, through you, Warden. Thank you for the question, Counsel McDermott. We installed those panels with a grant that came out a number of years ago, when they had a whole bunch of grants available for solar panels. So the R O I on our system would have been less than some other places. I know in the report that we just brought for North Perth, they have an 880-panel array on the Steve Kerr Arena, and when looking at R O I, the turnaround on that was about seven years. So they have made about the equivalent of $5,500,000 of revenue off of the panels, but the payback was around, I think, six or six and a half hundred thousand. So they still have about a year left of payback, but these panels are rated for like 15, 20 years or more. So although there might be like a longer payback of, you know, five to seven years, the income generation per year is quite substantial. Same was emulated in Perth East solar panels. I think they made around $30,000 of revenue or offset to the power cost for the facilities just last year alone.
The panels, they're a lot better than they used to be, I assume? Because it used to be they talked about every year you lost whatever percentage of efficiency. And I think sometimes they were talking about that they wouldn't last more than about, it would last more than 12 years, but your efficiency or your return or whatever, you needed to get that within the 12. So I just wondered if you have any knowledge, like if they've changed a lot of how they build those panels, that your efficiency rating is going to stay up there? It's not going to drop by like 10% every year or so?
Through you, Warden. I think the efficiency really depends on the type of panels that are installed. There have been great leaps and bounds made on improving the technology in the past 10 years, so even since our panels have been installed at the county. But you can get ones, like solar panels now, that look just like clay roof tile, all the way up to like the traditional ones that we see a lot of in this area. So to answer your question, it's more case-by-case specific, I think.
Okay, Counsel Orr?
Just one more question. In regarding the trees, do we have a policy or a plan when older trees are taken down for safety concerns, obviously? And I'm pointing to the area of Harmony. Do we have a plan to plant trees there to replace them?
Through you, Warden Eggers. Currently, we don't, we don't have an internal policy that deals with trees that are removed for, like, like that scenario, where they're removed, they're at their end of lifespan, or there, there is other hazards involved with them. However, in saying that, that is something that is on our radar to look at. What are other counties doing? What should our practice be going forward? Recognizing that there is opportunities there to, to replace some of the trees that are growing on our roadside.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, then we have a motion that council receives the 2024 Perth County Energy Conservation and Demand Management Plan Report, and that council approves the 2024 Perth County Energy Conservation and Demand Management Plan for submission to the province as required under O R E G 507/18. Moved by Counsel Duncan, second by Counsel Aitchison. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, and then we're going to go over the County Road Network Rationalization Project. John?
Thank you, Warden Eggers. This report is to formally confirm Roads Rationalization Committee with the composition of Warden Eggers and Counselors Aitchison, Kessinger, and Mackenzie. The committee will establish the criterion and weighting framework for the road rationalization process. This framework will then inform the analysis and assessment of the selected roads within the overall network. A public works staff and the consultant will support and assist the committee in the selection of criteria. Staff have had a project kickoff meeting with the consultant, Tatham Engineering Limited, to discuss the process, required data, and project timelines. It is expected that the Road Rationalization Committee will meet with Tatham in late August of this year to establish criteria and weighting. This should take one, maybe two meetings, and will be the only requirement of the committee. A final report and recommendations are expected to be presented to County Council by the end of 2024. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Questions of the report? No questions. We have a motion that council receives the County Road Network Rationalization Project Committee of Appointments Report, and that council confirms the County Road Network Rationalization Committee composition of Warden Eggers, Counselors Mackenzie, Aitchison, and Kasselberg. Move or a secondary move by Counsel Smith, second by Counsel Trenkowski. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, thank you, Ms. Reed, for those reports. Now we're going to move to Warden's Activity Report. Is there any questions where I was or what I did for the month of May? Another busy month. So we have a motion that council receives a Warden Activity Report, May 2024, Report for Information. So we have a motion that council receives a Warden Activity Report, May 2024, report for information. Moved by Deputy Warden Kellam, second by Council McDermott. All in favor? Carried. Okay, now we're going to move to bylaws and we have several of them to go over and motions due. So the first one, it's that bylaw 3980-2024, we read a first, second, third and finally pass this sixth day of June 2024. And this is the road rationalization committee. We'll comment to people on the committee. Moved by Council Duncan, second by Council McDermott. All in favor? Carried. Next one is for the OPA 220, that was a make them. Bylaw 3981-2024, we read a first, second, third time and finally pass this sixth day of June 2024. Moved by Council Duncan and Council McDermott. All in favor? Carried. 3982-2024, this is OPA 221, North Perth. And this bylaw 3982-2024, we read a first, second, third time and pass this sixth day of June 2024. Moved by Council Smith, second by Council Aitchison. All in favor? Carried. That's the one that you want. I was wondering when you were going to grab that. 39, this is OPA 226, and that was the Atom application. Bylaw 3984-2024, read a third time and pass this day, the sixth day of June. Council McDermott moves, second by Deputy Warden Kellam. All in favor? Carried. This is OPA 227, that was a Van Newland application, that bylaw 3985-2024, we read a first, second, third time and pass this sixth day of June 2024. Moved by Council Trenkowski, second by Council Duncan. All in favor? Carried. Okay, do we have any notice of motions? Any other business? Any announcements? We do need a closed session, so we have a motion that council move into closed session at approximately 12:07 PM. Right, in accordance with Section 239 of the municipal act to consider a matter pertaining to neighbor relations under paramedic expenses and a matter pertaining to potential litigation under the CAO office.
We're going to be five minutes before we.
We can. We need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Council Trenkowski, second by Council McDermott. All in favor? Carried. Can have two quick minutes. Bylaw 3986-2024, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council that corporations in the county of Perth that is regularly meeting held June 6, 2024 is read a first, second and third times and finally pass June 6, 2024. Moved by Council Orr, second by Council Trenkowski. All in favor? Carried. And the last motion of the morning is council be adjourned at 12:45 PM. Moved by Council McKenzie, second by Council Duncan. All in favor? Carried.